Good evening, welcome to this January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Norfolk City Council. I'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Granquist, Arns, Merrill, not, sorry, Webb, McCarthy, Muren, Jackson, Lawson, Hildebrandt.
All right, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from the consent agenda due to my liquor license.
Okay.
I'll make motion.
I'll second that.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arns, Webb, Muren, Lawson, Hildebrandt abstaining from the vote, McCarthy, motion carries.
With that, we'd look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number twenty-six on the council agenda under public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing to consider the redevelopment plan for the Foundry Apartments Redevelopment Project. And to kick off the hearing, we'll hear from Randy Gates, our city finance officer.
Foundry Apartments LLC submitted a TIF application on September twenty-third for this property, which is immediately north of Big Red Kino, as shown on the screen. The project was voted to move forward unanimously by the Economic Development Subcommittee. And at the November twenty-one committee development agency meeting, the agency accepted the redevelopment plan and forwarded it to Planning Commission. Commanding Commission held a hearing on this plan at their December sixth meeting and recommended approval of the plan on a nine to zero vote. The agency approved Resolution Number twenty-two-two-two-three on December nineteenth, recommending approval of the redevelopment plan to the City Council. Closing the agenda packet is a redevelopment plan for Foundry Apartments Redevelopment Project. Project site is approximately seven acres of undeveloped land. The redevelopment project will consist of construction of approximately five three-six unit apartment buildings for a hundred and eighty units total, one clubhouse and pool area, and six twelve unit garage structures for seventy-two total stalls. Redeventor construct access to the property from West Pazwalk Avenue and construct a sidewalk on the south side of West Pazwalk out of a new boarding project site. There will also be access to the site off Parker Circle to the east and Market Lane to the south. The redevelopment will extend utilities to site and grade the site as appropriate. The costs of these public improvements, site acquisition, and other TIF eligible costs are expected to be about four point four million. Total project cost, including private improvements, is expected to be over twenty-six million. Redeventor is requesting TIF of four million fifteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Project is not economically feasible without TIF. And Redeventor and his representatives are also here tonight to answer questions. And I'd answer any questions.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy?
I guess I just have one question on the egress in and out of this facility. There's just two on here.
The redevelopment plan itself does not show the ingress and egress off of Parker Circle. That wasn't determined at the time the plan was put together, but there will be ingress and egress off of Parker Circle, and then also off of Market Lane and Pazwalk Avenue.
Okay. I guess the reason I look at that is for a public safety factor. We have to get fire trucks in there. It was just basically off Pazwalk. But where the arrow is, there'll be another one, you said?
What was that?
There'll be where the arrow is at, there'll be another.
Yes.
I think the developer, developers are here tonight if they wish to address that. But any other questions for Randy for the time being?
Hi.
Good evening.
Spencer Lombardo, representing the developer.
Andrew Williams, Klein Williams, two thirty-three South Thirteenth Street, Lincoln.
Evening.
Yeah, I'll just echo to start off with what Randy said. I mean, it's about a twenty-six million dollar project, a hundred and eighty units. And really, you know, that four, the four million dollars, or little over four million dollars, and TIF really does make this feasible, taking that vacant site, bringing in all the infrastructure to make this work. That's really, I mean, the key to making this work. It does, it, you know, it fits in with the comp plan, the future land use shows multifamily residential in this area. In the comp plan, the objectives in the Highway two seventy-five corridor, including infill in this, and residential, more density, begin getting a hundred and eighty units in here, a mix of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, a nice, a nice mix and some, and some options. Seventy-two covered garages, approximately seventy-two covered garages, and the additional on-street parking stalls. Really should make for a pretty nice, a pretty nice facility. And as, as just discussion was, there will be the additional access point to the north there, so there will, there will be any dead ends, or should be multiple ingress egress from each, each building. In case of emergency. But yeah, with the, with, with all the internal paving, sewer, water, storm sewer, everything's got to come in those sidewalks, streets. It really is, it's about, I mean, the cost are probably going up every day as we speak, over four and a half million. And it really, really makes, it really makes it feasible on, on this project. Timeline construction, I mean, it's probably starting sometime soon this year if everything's approved. Still have changes on subdivision, but, and then really finish up before the, sometime in twenty twenty-four, end of twenty twenty-four. That's kind of it from the big picture. Spencer, do you want to add anything specific? We're happy to answer any questions.
I got one, and it kind of piggybacks off of Councilman Maron. On that entrance that comes off of West Pazwalk Avenue, is there any type of traffic study that would need to be done because of the congestion that Hy-Vee and the Menards Turn and everything that happens right there? Is there any need for a traffic study or a traffic light?
So I have, I have looked at that a little bit. There is a three-lane, that is a three-lane section there, so there will be a left turn bay for, for sort of that southbound, westbound, southbound Pazwalk traffic will have a, a left turn bane, so they're able to pull out of traffic and wait for that queue if the queue is needed. At a hundred, at the hundred and eighty-five units, I would, I would not expect, it's actually going to be less congested than the Hy-Vee intersection itself there at, at Hy-Vee and, and Big Ten. We would unfortunately do to, due to the proximity of that Hy-Vee entrance to Highway two seventy-four, we would not consider a, a signalized intersection there. I don't, I don't, you know, again, from the, from the hundred and eighty-five units that are going there, I don't see a, a driver from a capacity standpoint to drive a full traffic impact study with, with the three approaches. I think that's going to fairly evenly distribute between the Pazwalk approach and the south approach onto two seventy-five. I think that third approach off, off to the east will be less used. We pushed for that approach primarily because when we get fire, emergency equipment that comes into that, that street, they can't really get out efficiently, and so we wanted to have a way for them to, to get out. That's been a request from that neighborhood. But still, there will be some, but, but I expect that to be more minor in nature.
Another challenge with the site, as you can see from the picture, is with just the large wetlands area, so obviously that's, that's a challenge when, when designing, and hopefully they, really the idea is to integrate that in and make it a nice looking area that serves well.
What is the total acres of the parcel?
The parcel, I believe, is, is, I'm trying to think if that includes the, the Big Red Kino, about twelve acres. The developable area, not including the wetlands, just the apartments, is about seven and a half, eight acres or...
So wetlands part is, is five to six acres?
Hmm?
The wetlands is about five to six acres altogether or so?
I think that includes the Big Red Kino as well.
That might include.
Yeah, okay.
So that wetlands would be...
Jeff, do you...
I think the wetlands are about two and a half, yeah.
Okay, okay. Do you ever see a, a retention pond of some kind?
Well, so, we did a similar project in, in Fremont, three hundred and twenty-four units, which has been a, a, a successful project for that community. And while we didn't have wetlands there, we did have a stormwater retention requirement, and we just planted natural grasses. So it's, it's not necessarily going to be like a lake where there's always water in it, but when there's, when there's not water in it, you know, you've got reed grasses and a lot of, and water fowl and things that kind of accumulate there, and it makes a nice nature feature, and we put a walking trail and benches around it, and, and the, the tenants, the community really enjoys it, and so we're going to repeat that, repeat that here with these wetlands.
Good, thank you.
I had the same question as Councilman Hildebrandt, but did you say there was one, two, and three bedroom units, or just one and two?
There's one, two, and three bedrooms. You know, it's a, an ever-changing market, and we're working with the architect to see to what extent we can do three bedrooms, because we, we know there's a, a great need for housing for families in the community that seems to be even getting more great as, as we've been working on this project for the past year. And so we are considering putting more three bedrooms into the mix to serve, you know, families or larger, you know, more than two people.
Thank you.
Yep.
I do have one question. On Exhibit E that you have in that packet, land acquisition, you have a million and a half. Can you explain is, what that all entails?
The, the site needs to be purchased, really, I mean, it'll be subdivided off and purchased, and so that, that's the purchase price of the land, really the contribution of that land to make for this project.
Just the land?
So there are, yeah, there are related partners, but there's also outside investors, so we had to put a fair market value on the land, to be fair to all the partners, and that's the estimate that we're, the estimate that we're using.
But that is just for the land?
But that's the purchase price or your estimated value of property?
It's the estimated value of the property.
But it will, but it will be the purchase price.
Right, correct.
That's the, that's the cost of the land in order to make for the...
So the land hasn't been purchased yet?
We have not subdivided it yet, no.
Really, that was subject to, making sure this, we got this approval first, because again, this, the, the TIF really does make this work, so if there's no TIF, then, then you wouldn't buy the land and wouldn't proceed.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Spencer, can you just go through, do you have that Exhibit E in front of you?
Yeah.
Just kind of, just for the public to hear how this TIF dollars are being used, and that we can understand how this helps this project, and how this money's allocated to the project.
Right, right, sure. So, you know, essentially, big picture, without the TIF, the, the project just doesn't work financially. You know, a certain amount of rents come in, and then you've got a certain amount of expenses, real estate taxes, and mowing the lawn and, and everything. And, and then you come up with, with your net operating income, okay? That's kind of the driver in an apartment project. That net operating income has to cover, that's basically your profit, that has to cover the mortgage. Without TIF, the rents that come in minus expenses would not cover the mortgage, and I went in great detail with the Community Development Agency in our meetings to go over, and was very transparent with our financials, and I believe that's, that's public information. And, and so what the, what TIF in Norfolk and most communities covers is, they, they, the, the state law limits us, am I saying this right? State law limits us to, to using TIF for public improvements and land acquisitions. So this is basically the improvements we need to make to the utilities, streets, water, sewer, as well as land acquisitions, as well as the land acquisition to make the project work, you know? And, and, and having the ability to, to have those infrastructure costs reimbursed is, is what makes the project viable. Without that, and you can see that, the, the need for housing in Norfolk, as I was just talking about earlier, was, is, is apparent, you know? There's, there's a huge need for housing, and there's not a ton of people building housing, and, and there's a reason. You know, in, in West Omaha, people are building apartments and getting seventeen hundred dollars for a two-bedroom. We can't get seventeen hundred dollars for a two-bedroom here. The market dictates the, the rents we can get. So it's, it's necessary to get TIF to be able to build this project and to be able to, to put more units on, on the market to help alleviate the, the need for housing in this community.
On the, on the list of uses there, I kind of break it down into three bigger categories. You've got site acquisition, which we mentioned, the land acquisition itself. Most of those fall, I just call them, you know, under infrastructure or the public utilities, so almost everything there, that's about, I think we had roughly two and a half million allocated there, if you start adding those numbers up, between, and, and including like the site prep, bringing in all the utilities, bringing, putting in streets and everything. And then there's a small piece in there for facade enhancements, and so that's another thing that's allowed under the community development law is, is you, it's the cost they're going to put into the, the building above code, above code requirements. So you could build, you could build apartments that look like X, and then they're going to put another, they're going to put money in and above that to make them look nicer, and again, that's part of under the community development law, those costs are also TIF eligible. So I think you had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, just as, as, you know, benefit, that's sort of that aesthetic benefit to the neighborhood and to the, to the area. So that was the, that's kind of the, that's the smallest of the three categories, the main one being in streets and utilities, about two and a half million.
Since you had talked about the, what the market holds in Omaha, what is the market for a two-bedroom of, of an apartment style that you're going to be building?
Yeah, so these are, so these are new apartments, and so we're going to be, you know, I guess, at the top of the market as far as apartments go, because that's, you know, where we have to be with costs. So we'll, we'll be comparable to the properties on the, on the east end of town, which is, you know, around twelve to thirteen hundred dollars a month for a two-bedroom apartment. But, you know, as, as we saw in Fremont, this also, this also opens up housing inventory in the rest of town, so there, there might be some legacy apartments, not, not the name legacy, because that's called legacy, but some, some older apartments that are not brand new, that people will move from those apartments to the new apartments, opening up inventory for other people to backfill some of the other apartments in town. And that, and that's what we've seen in Fremont, and, and I anticipate we'll see that here as well.
What's the one bedroom, do you think, and how much do those cost?
We're not going to have a ton of them. You know, I think those will come in between nine hundred and a thousand, but our, our focus isn't on one bedrooms, because, you know, when there, when there's demand for housing, that's the most inefficient, to live in a, a large square foot with only one bedroom in it. So we're going to focus more on studios, twos and threes, but we will have maybe fifteen to, fifteen to twenty percent one bedrooms, yeah.
Just one more question. So you have final value per apartment, it's about a hundred and ten thousand, is that about what, what it runs you to, to build one of those?
That's, you mean the, just the hard cost or the total cost?
It says your sources, general assumptions, final value per apartment, about a hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, that's assessed value, so it's actually going to cost more to build. We, we had the assessed value at about twenty million, twenty million five hundred thousand for the entire project, and that's that hundred and ten thousand. That's just based on trying to look at other new apartments that are being built around other communities. That's, that's where that number came from.
So the one ten...
The, the cost is actually higher than that.
It is high, but how much roughly?
About, we haven't got a bid yet, but, so there's some variables, but we anticipate it's going to be around twenty-eight million to build it. And that's all, all in, soft costs, hard costs, carried interest, and your hard construction cost.
Divided by one eighty.
Okay, let's do it. So about, yeah, about a hundred and fifty-five thousand a unit.
About one fifty-five, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Seeing, hearing no one, I will move to close the hearing and proceed to item twenty-seven. Look for a motion to consider Resolution Number twenty-two-three-five approving the redevelopment plan for the Foundry Apartments Redevelopment Project.
I'll make a motion for consideration of Resolution Number twenty-two-three-five.
I'll second that.
Motion second, and any discussion, counsel? Further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, Resolution twenty-two-three-five is adopted.
Item twenty-eight, I would open this public hearing to consider a blighted and substandard declaration for the area referred to as the Highway, West Highway two seventy-five Phase Two redevelopment area. And to give us some background on this, we'll hear from Tom Higginbotham, who is Director of the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Tom Higginbotham has, and I already pre-signed in, so I didn't forget to do that. I think we have a couple new councilmen here since maybe the last time we've done this, but just want to maybe give a little tiny bit of history and what we do. But our office has been doing blight and substandard studies for the city of Norfolk for the last twenty-five years. I've been there twenty-three of those twenty-five, so I'm getting old. We do, we only do them at the request of city staff. We do not work with developers, we do not work on, with developers on their projects or get into redevelopment plans or cost benefit analysis. We only do the blight substandard determination studies. One thing I'd like to point out, in your packet, we subcontract with Olson and Associates to, to write the legal description, and during the city staff engineering department review, they noticed something that maybe was an error, so they reached out to Olson and agreed that there was an error. So if you look at the study, and it'll obviously look like this in your packet, if you go to page six, and you'll see the, the legal description, the very last sentence says, "Said tract contains zero point two seven acres." That is going to be deleted. That is an error, so that will be deleted from the legal description and be reflected in the new Exhibit One on page thirteen, the map of the legal description from Olson. So I just want to make sure that, that was pointed out. Just a little, a little background on the study area. This study area is six hundred and twenty-one point five six six acres, of which two hundred point four six are outside the city limits, and about four hundred and twenty point nine two six are within the city limits. So we want to make sure that we, everybody understands that. We started working on this back in August, and on August fifteenth, we sent letters out to all the property owners of, of all these properties within this area. And as of today, I have received no phone calls or emails or personal visits from any of those folks requesting information or asking questions, so. And one other thing I'd like to point out is on page three of the study, it talks about objective criteria. There's five quantitative objective criteria, you have to meet at least one of those. And this study meets the average age has to be at least forty years or more. So if you meet at least one of those, five, I'm not going to read all five, they're on there for you, then you have to look at the subjective criteria. And, and to move forward, you have to meet at least one of those. And it meets the deterioration and, and substandard qualities. So looking at this, the law identifies, when we look at substandard factors, the, the development law identifies six substandard factors. Our review, we met three of those, this study met three of those. Number one is the dilapidation and deterioration, and the details of that are on page six. You know, we looked at these properties via, via the GIS, Madison County GIS, and also we went out and did a site visit, you know, and for the record from public right of ways, we don't go on people's personal properties. So we looked at the properties, the total structures assessed were twenty-four. Of the, of the twenty-four of the forty-six we're given a rating, there's forty-six properties. Twenty-four of them were given ratings of fair, poor, dilapidated. That accounts for fifty-two point one seven percent of being rated fair or poor or dilapidated. The next one that it meets is the age or obsolescence. And if anybody knows me, I kind of joke around, so whenever I hear that word obsolescence, I always think about Burgess Meredith in that Twilight Zone episode, so bear with me. Number two, age and obsolescence. We looked at that, there were thirty-one buildings with an age listed, so the average age of those proper, of those buildings was fifty-four point one six, with sixty-two point two nine percent of those being over forty years of age. And then the third one is the existence and condition which endanger life or property by fire and other causes. So based on the age of the properties, you know, there, there's some things to look at there. You know, you can have faulty wiring, you know, roofs that are old, you know, and also looking at the area, you know, there's, you know, you know, dilapidated buildings, weeds growing up, you know, debris out there that can cause injuries and, and human health issues. So then, the next thing is we look at the blight factors, and there are sixteen blight And this particular study, in our opinion, meets six, or five of those. Five, yeah, five. Number one, it starts on page seven, at down there toward the bottom, is substandard number of the deteriorated or deteriorating structures. So as I mentioned before, twenty-four of the forty-six received fair, poor, dilapidated, which is fifty-two percent, point one seven percent. Number four is the unsafe sanitary conditions, looking at, you know, the, the debris, the dilapidated buildings, we meet that criteria. And then number fi, the third one is on page, starts on page eight, nine, which is the unsafe conditions. So if you look at those debris and those dilapidated buildings, there's a lot of potential for unsafe conditions. Number ten, the fourth one, which starts on page nine, down there toward the bottom, it's labeled number ten, "The existence and conditions that endanger life and property by fire or other causes." So those kind of wrapping together with all those same criteria. And then if you meet those, then you can look at number twelve, which starts on page ten, and there's one, two, three, four, five other things to look at, and you have to meet at least one of those. And that meets, in our opinion, twelve, two. The average age, obviously, the resident of the units qualifying conditions, average age has to be over forty. So thirty-one had an age recorded, so thirty-one of the struck, there's thirty-one structures, the average age is fifty-four point one six percent, sixty-one percent of the buildings are over the age forty, and that's on page ten. The next thing I'll just kind of point out is the exhibits. Obviously, Exhibit One, page twelve, that is just a map of the area. Exhibit One, page thirteen, is the legal description map created by Olson, as I mentioned. At the bottom of that legal description, we'll, we'll fix that minor error that's in there. Exhibit two is the listing of all the parcels and the acres. So that's where we get the six, and this is per the Madison County GIS and a little finessing with Olson, and I'll explain that. So that's where we get the six hundred and twenty-one point five six six percent, or acres, and then the inside and outside. And if you look down there in the middle, down there toward the bottom, parcel number fifteen is highlighted, and it's sixty acres. That piece of parcel, right up there where that arrow is, was split, so the, the part of that parcel below is not included in the study, so we had to manually estimate what that acres was, and I estimated seventy-three percent. The professionals at Olson said sixty, so we'll go with them. So that's where we get that total acres. So that's where we get that total acres. And then exhibit three is the listing of the age. You'll see all the properties there, and that's where we get the average age based on the GIS. And then exhibit four, which is page sixteen through twenty-one, are the pictures that document the, the other items that I mentioned below, or before, so. With that, in our opinion, you know, this, this area meets the, the definition of blight and substandard per state statute. Questions?
Thank you, Tom. Any questions?
I might point out to the council that the blight and substandard study that's in your agenda packets does have the correct legal description. We discovered that after the planning commission hearing, but before we got it, the city council agenda packets out, so what you're looking at doesn't have that error in it that Tom's referring to. It was in the blight and substandard study that was in your December fifth city council pack, I thought we forwarded to the planning commission, but it is out of this packet now.
Yep. And has no bearing on the final decision anyway, so.
Tom, I do have a question.
Yep.
This is, maybe it's kind of more of a statement, but you've been working on this for quite a while, haven't you?
This study or just the general?
Yeah, this study in general.
Yeah, we started back in August.
Back in August.
Yeah, and did it, and then when we're, actually, we were done with it probably at the beginning, middle of September, and then I had a draft, and then I submitted that to the city staff, and then they look at it and review it, and we, there was some back and forth on, on some thing, qualifications and just the timing of that.
I was thinking it was even years that this was actually looked at for this type of?
Well, it's called Phase Two, but there was an original one looked at a while back, but that one never went anywhere, and it was revised to match this. So the other, yeah, so we started in August on this, on this area. And I'd also like to point out, too, you know, this is an area, so the area as a whole meets this condition, it's not every single piece of property in there meets that condition.
Tom, typically, not always, blight studies are prompted by some interest in redevelopment projects, and you may not be able to get specific, but has there been general interest in redevelopment projects in this, in this area, within the?
I would refer to your economic development staff for that, but.
Yes. Sorry, Candace Solder with the Economic Development Office. Yeah, our office has received multiple inquiries over the past year. Two were commercial in nature, and one was for housing development. And so we took a look at the area and reached out to Tom's group to study it and see if that could be a potential tool. In those three cases, all three of the developers did inquire about TIF, so in order for them to even put forward a redevelopment plan for your consideration, this criteria has to be met, or we can't talk about that, so.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for Tom? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so anyone else wishing to comment can do so now.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Ray Stela, and my wife and I own some land on West two-seventy-five. Just, and we've been out there for twenty-five years, but I think this TIF would be a huge advantage for development out west. We get inquiries once or twice a year easily on people wanting to come that way, and they ask us those same exact questions, so I guess I just wanted to speak in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Thank you for being here. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Okay, seeing, hearing no one, I move to close the hearing and proceed to item number twenty-nine. Look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two-three-six approving the blighted and substandard declaration for the area referred to as the West Highway two-seventy-five Phase Two redevelopment area.
I'll be abstaining from resolution twenty-two-three-six.
And I will offer for consideration resolution number twenty-two-three-six.
Motion second, any discussion, counsel? Okay, I would just say, with this and the previous item indicates there's further interest in these kind of redevelopment projects in the city, both residential-wise and commercial, which is a positive thing, and these are just steps in the process to help offer potentially one of the few local incentives we have for redevelopment. So with that, if no other discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arnz, Webb, McCarthy, Muren, Hildebrand, abstaining from the vote, Lawson, resolution twenty-two-three-six is adopted.
All right, that moves us to our regular agenda and item number thirty. I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight fourteen approving a zoning change from I-one light industrial district to R-one, single-family residential district on property addressed as three-oh-one South Eighth Street. As a note, this ordinance was tabled at the December fifth city council meeting and passed on first reading at the December nineteenth council meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-eight fourteen.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, and for a little background and refresher on this, Val Grimes, our city planner, please.
Thank you. This piece of property is a small piece of property in the southeast corner of Eighth and Philip, and this parcel is non-conforming with the residential no longer being permitted in the I-one zoning district, which is why the new owner who wants to flip the structure as residential is requesting this residential zoning change from I-one to R-one. Discussion at Planning Commission consisted of the size of the small lot, setbacks, buffer yards, the future owners of this potentially, the surrounding structures, and the zoning. And due to these discussions, the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval failed unanimously. Being safety of the residents living and sleeping about five feet away from a warehouse is a concern, particularly as both of these structures are a hundred-plus years old. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Val.
I do have a question, Val. So if this were to pass, would we be able to attach any kind of addendum to that property? So if a title search was done, somebody would find this property still in a non-conforming?
So, yeah, it's not completely clean because by our code, the buffer yards would then revert to whoever changed the zoning. So by code, I would have to actually file an affidavit against the title of this down at the courthouse, saying that if something happened with, to it, that they would then be responsible of, for the buffer yards.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Any public input? Yes. You have to come forward, sir. That item will be later in the meeting.
Oh.
Yep, we're not on, we're not to that yet. Thank you, thank you, okay. You're good, you're good. Any other public input? Okay, hearing no further discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, providing this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Webb, McCarthy, Lawson, voting in opposition, Arnz, Muren, Hildebrand. This will require five votes if Mayor will provide the fifth.
No vote, yes.
With Mayor providing the fifth vote, ordinance number fifty-eight fourteen carries on second reading.
Okay, with that, we will move to item number thirty-one, and I'd entertain a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two-three-seven authorizing Nebraska Public Power District to apply to the Nebraska Power Review Board to amend existing retail service area for the city of Norfolk to include tracts of land annexed by ordinance number fifty-seven-ninety-five, which expanded the corporate limits.
I will offer for consideration resolution number twenty-two-three-seven.
Motion second, for some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director.
Mayor and counsel, this is, when we annex property, one of the things we do, if it's outside of our NPPD power distribution area, we generally bring that in as following that annexation. That's what this is here. When we did the large annexation a year ago, we felt it was desirable that the city did a resolution and added their name to the application for the Power Review Board, felt that was just going to be a stronger, presented a stronger position for the community. This is a much smaller annexation, there is actually no power to be acquired, or no distribution system to be acquired with this, so our cost is zero, but we still want to add this area into our NPPD territory. Brittany is here, our NPPD representative, if there are more specific questions around that.
Okay, any questions?
Just clarifying, this is a, in the event there is future, future development, that they would be served electrically, right?
By, by, and by our NPPD, yeah, yes.
Okay.
What, I guess, the only question I really have, I guess, what these residents would see or notice in any changes? Maybe you can't answer that, NPPD can, I'm not sure.
Currently, there are no residents in this, in this annexed area, so anything that would be developed or built would be new and would be put on NPPD power.
So that means not a lot of people.
Thanks for the clarification, Shane.
Any further questions or discussion?
Brittany, do you think there's anything worth adding to this?
Yeah, and just to be clear, this is the area that would be east of Highway thirty-five and south of Dollar General, there's a large triangle down in that area. That was a Aaron Gary development.
Right.
The only thing that I would add was, it would be that-
Can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Brittany Koenig with the Nebraska Public Power District, I'm the account manager for the city of Norfolk. And the only thing that I would add is that, like Stephen said, for consistency, you guys were a party on the application last year, so as we move forward with these annexations, this would be one. It is a very small part, but yes, what it would, what it says to the Power Review Board is that we have jointly worked with the other utility, in this case, it's Elcor and Rural Public Power, that we have worked with them, that everyone is on the same page, and it just bodes easily, so that when we go before them, it typically passes with absolutely no issue. That's all I'd add. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. All right, any other questions or discussion? Any public input? Okay, seeing, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty-two-three-seven is adopted.
Item thirty-two, would look for a motion to consider approval for engineering design services contract with Black and Beach Corporation for the West Water Treatment Plant Improvements and New Collector Well fourteen project for an amount not to exceed seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand four-and-seven dollars.
I'll make an offer of consideration of approval for engineering design services with Black and Beach.
Second.
Motion and a second, and for some background on this, we'll hear from City Water Systems Advisor, is that your current title, Dennis?
Close enough.
Okay, Dennis Watts. Whatever it is, we're always glad to have you, Dennis.
Thank you. Someone's name is Dennis Watts, as Mayor said. Okay, so I'm going to talk about the design services contract with Black and Beach. I'm passing out a piece of paper there, I kind of, I put down a lot of the bullets, that'll help me walk through this in a timely fashion. So this contract, as we said, will be with Black and Beach. We've been working on this for quite some time as far as the water plant improvements and the collector well. So this design services agreement is basically set up for three construction packages, and I'll explain it more in detail as we walk through, but the first one is West Plant Improvements, the Collector Well fourteen construction, also the transmission pipeline connecting Well fourteen to the West Plant. There are some critical needs, at the West Plant is the two-million-gallon storage reservoir. Basically, this tank was constructed in nineteen-seventy-four, at the time the plant was built. Population in nineteen-seventy was sixteen-thousand-six-hundred, and we're now at approximately twenty-five-thousand. One thing that's happened on this is as more people go with sprinkler system that, our max hour goes up a lot, so that's how many gallon basically is used by the city in Norfolk in one hour. And your sprinklers are what it really drives at max hour. That two-million-gallon, we can be full, you know, during, during dry periods, but when the sprinklers all run for about four or five hours, we really drop to critical levels. So when that plant was built in seventy-four, there was a connection made, there was anticipated that another two million would be, would be installed at some time. So that's a very critical need for us. The other one is the Well fourteen collector well. Some of you know it, and maybe some of you don't, and we have a very good aquifer out the West Plant, the West Well Field, but the static water level in dry times will run approximately twenty to twenty-five feet, so that'd be water below ground level, and basically what's going to happen, Val, so up on the, on the screen behind you, we have that right there is a collector well. And what that is, is you have laterals that run out the bottom of the aquifer, so the bottom of the aquifer is about seventy feet, that's where you hit the shale and basically the bottom of the aquifer. These screens or these laterals will go out at about sixty feet. So you have, you know, when you have them way down at the bottom, you get a very narrow cone of depression. And if you have a standard well, Phil, Phil, if you turn, you get a very sharp cone of depression, and so our wells will start actually sucking air, which is hard on the wells. So this collector well is very important, we put one in in two thousand and three, and it's basically served us very well. This would, this well fourteen is proposed to put out approximately four-point-three-million gallon of a day, water a day. The well we put in the collector well in two thousand and three, we had those laterals cambered about in two thousand and sixteen, looked like brand-new itself. They're a very hardy well, they work very good in shallow aquifers like ours, so we're able to draw that water out. So that, in our opinion, at Chad Mine, is a very, very critical need for us. The collector well will include the construction, building, electrical system, also standby power. And if you guys have questions, go ahead and, you know, ask as I'm going through, I'm just going to kind of walk through these, I've got about another ten bullets here. The West Plant improvements will be basically to increase the transfer capacity pumps to fourteen-point-five, because that's what we'll be able to produce for water at the West Plant, fourteen-point-five. Basically, we have an existing nineteen-seventy-four transfer pump put in when the plant was built, needs to be upgraded to meet those treated water demands of fourteen-point-five, so we're planning on doing, replacing one pump that was installed in nineteen-seventy-four. Also, we need to increase the zone, the zone one, which is the bulk of town, all the lower elevation in town, that's probably eighty percent of our water, that's close, but again, we want to replace an existing nineteen-seventy-four thirty-five-hundred-gallon minute pump with a fifty-five-hundred-gallon-per-minute pump. So some of these pumps are definitely, they're at the end of their cycle, and so it makes sense at this time to try to, to upgrade those to meet the existing, what our new demand will be, of fourteen-point-five. We're also going to add an additional zone-two pump that feeds the high elevations in Norfolk, we installed two in- we installed two in nineteen-ninety-nine, and with more growth up there, we are needing, it's time to put another one in. We're also going to add some redundant piping at the West Plant, some of the pipes that were originally installed in nineteen-seventy-four, we're going to add a redundant pipe in some critical areas. That plant, as most of you probably know, that is our, the East Plant runs generally from about April, or, excuse me, about June, July, August, and September, so this other plant, that's our, we got a lot of eggs in that basket out there, so we need to make sure that plant runs all the time. And then, so then again, the two-million-gallon storage reservoir. I do have costs, you know, projected cost, you know, and this includes some engineering and other things, but the well fourteen transmission and the transmission main, that's about, it's close to five million, they're very expensive wells, but they should last a hundred years. But these plant, we're using, utilizing well now is installed nineteen-twenty-nine, going on a hundred years, there's no reason, you know, a well shouldn't last that, so we're definitely building for the future. So we have that, then West Plant improvements, a lot of those pumps were, you know, touching one-and-a-half million, and then two-million-gallon storage, it could be around two-point-nine. So this is kind of the first step, if you look at the project timeline, we're hoping to have this passed tonight, so we can get Black and Beach working on the design of basically the well fourteen, you know, the two-million-gallon reservoir, the pumps that we need, things like that, and then hopefully get, you know, moving out there for bids and maybe start construction at September, October of this year. So that's a very brief description I went through real quick, but do you have some questions on, you know, the, you know, whatever we showed, the collector well versus a standard, or, you know, some of the, the pumps I've talked about, or anything?
What triggered the needs, I mean, for the investment, new investment to be put in?
A couple of different things. Number one is, just Norfolk continues to grow, so that's kind of why we're looking at going up to about, in the fourteen-point-five-million-gallon day, that will max out that plant today and also the well field. But as the town continues to grow, so that's one, we've seen additional growth since nineteen-seventy-four, when we installed or built the plant, we've had a lot of growth. The other one is, like I said, the, just, you know, the use of the water by people, the sprinklers, that's a huge deal. Everybody's went to sprinklers a lot in the last, say, twenty, twenty-five years, and that puts a big demand on that system. About a year and a half, we guys passed where we're going to try, we're trying to have people, you know, water even odd days, and that helps knock that ma, that max date down, but that's another big reason for it. Also, we're trying to replace some of those pumps from nineteen-seventy-four, they're out there in their life cycles, I mean, they do need something done, so we're looking at that, and also the redundant piping that I talked about. If we, we have one single thirty-inch pipe that comes out of that plant to feed all of the zone-one, the low elevation, so we have one, one pipe there, we're going to do a redundant piping there, because if we really lose that, we'd be in a world of trouble pretty quick. So we have a lot of critical needs that are coming up, just due to the growth in Norfolk, and just some of the age of the system.
Council, another, another part of that answer is, we're just wrapping up about three or four years that we've been engaged with Black and Beach on a, on a water, twenty-forty water master plan. When you're planning your water and sewer infrastructure, and even to some extent your street infrastructure, we don't wait until the need is there, we anticipate that need looking at historical growth and forecasting future growth, and then we build for that need, and then as that need develops, our ability to distribute water is there. The other thing to note on this is, I frequently get contacted about nitrates in our water system. Madison County is known for having high, high nitrates, and so occasionally you'll see news on that. The well that you see right here, the standard vertical well, is more susceptible to high nitrates. These large production wells, horizontal production wells, are much, much less susceptible to the nitrates that tend to be in the upper side of the aquifer. So it also helps us control long-term our nitrate concentrations.
And Steve brings up two very good points, and one is our nitrates, ten-milligram-per-liter is the EPA max, we're at point-three-two, so we do have a very good aquifer for that. And as he also pointed out, which I forgot to mention, was he, you know, this will put us, should put us through water through twenty-forty, as with, you know, expected population and some of the growth with annexation, things like that, this will, it puts us in a position to serve all those water needs. You know, what we did in nineteen-seventy-four is worked for quite a few years, but we're just getting to that point where we're going to hit some critical areas if we don't do some work now.
Right.
In the near future.
Do all these projects need to coincide at the same time, or are these things you have, you can?
Well, the two critical ones are the two-million-gallon reservoir-
Right.
And then the collector well. And then if you're doing that, you're going to need to build, right now, we can only treat a, I believe it's eleven-point-eight million gallon per day, in about, I think it's two-thousand-one, State put us at that, it's either ten-eight or eleven-two, and so that's another reason that we talked about in the, in the projects, some reaction basin piping, and that was noted in, I think it was two-thousand-one, we got a letter from State. So we've been planning a lot, we just, we're ready, I think we need to pull the trigger.
When would you say you started planning, how long have we been, we've been planning for this?
In two thousand and two and two thousand and eight master plans, we noted that we would need additional wells.
This has been going on?
Yes. And again, like I said, in seventy-four, they anticipated this future tank in seventy-four, and fifty years later, we're basically ready for it. So we have done a lot of looking in the last, say, ten, fifteen years, geared up towards this. And as Steve said, the latest master plan we're doing, we started that in two thousand and nineteen, is, you know, now we're able to know what our numbers in twenty-forty, so we can plan for that.
I think one other thing to mention, too, would be beneficial, the second two-million-gallon tank, is that when you guys, excuse me if I get this wrong, but flush the filters, it really exercises the, the entire two-million, two-million-gallon tank where this would be beneficial to, where you didn't exercise it to the max with the second, with that second tank.
That is exactly correct. Right now, our two-million-gallon tank top, the overflow is forty-four-point-five-feet, so forty-four-point-five-feet, and when we backwash certain fields, we'll drop about five feet off of there, and if you tie that in with the sprinklers, the high usage, that's when you got to backwash more, because the filter backwash is based on gallons going through that, how many gallons, so that's, that's a very good point, we need it for that also.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, you, there isn't an abundance amount of water being used for sprinkler systems, but I believe it was a year ago, maybe two years ago already, we did put forth an ordinance where, we're asking voluntarily to go eat odd and even days, your watering, depending on your address, but then there's a few items underneath there to protect our, our water system that we have in place right now.
That is correct.
Okay.
And we have seen some, you know, it's, you know, we're, we asked for, that was voluntarily done, is what council wanted in that, in that ordinance at that time, and we've seen some help on that, I think there's still, we do still get some high and low days yet, so I bet that, I was very glad to see you guys pass that even odd.
That's a good note, Councilman, I was going to bring that up. Since we're hearing sprinklers and watering puts such stress on the system, are there the communities just looking forward, we're in a time of drought, that have gone beyond that? You know, we wanted at that time to make it voluntary, but if we're seeing such significant stress on our system that we're contemplating spending that much money on more, is it wise to look at another system, a more, a more restrictive system, a mandatory restriction on some watering?
We could do that, one thing Chad and I have talked a lot about is, we want to, you know, I think public education is really key, and so we think, I think Chad's going to be putting things out in February, March, before people set up their sprinkler systems to really get them geared towards that, because that will be a big help. That's what most cities do, is what, what we're doing, some have it where, you know, it's enforced right off the bat, we have the volunteer, we're hoping to get people just to change by public education, is what we're trying to do. And when you look at the other steps, I mean, we can get, if we do have to ration, I don't want to say ration water, cut down on that, we do have that, you do, it is mandatory that even odd, then, as you look at some of the steps in that, in that ordinance.
Yeah.
So we're hoping public education will do it.
And with some things that have been passed with the, with the local NRD, we do not fall under that criteria of some of the water restrictions the NRD is putting on us because of the, because of the work you guys have done to set this up.
Yeah, about two or three in Val, I think, was tight in this, Steve, like Chad, we did some work with, in conjunction with the NRD, we, we came up the drought management plan, it's about a three, four-page document, talked about different, you know, we're basing our, you know, if we ration water, things like that, on, you know, like, our static water levels and things like that, so they bought, you know, they were, bought in that right with us, we, we worked with them really very good, and so that's why we fall under, our drought management plan is approved with the NRD.
Versus the NRDs?
Correct.
Okay.
Dennis, I do have a question. So how would, when you get into the projected cost, how would that affect consumer rates?
We're going to be studying that a little bit more, I think, Steve, March, April of this year, but we do have some money that we have in the bank, we've got a lot of our projects, we currently are not in debt, we do have some, a lot of our projects, all of our projects are paid off, so we'll have probably, you know, maybe three, four million that we'll put towards it, and then the rest would be, would have to be bonded, that could, it'll have to be, Steve and I know Chad are looking at the rates, but I would say probably some, you know, there will be some rate increases. Since two thousand and ten, I think we've had, the last fourteen years, I think we've had some, some very minor increases, some of that twos and threes, I think with three or four years, we didn't have any increases, but it will, because we get no tax dollars, it's all based off, off of sales, so there would be some rate increases projected, I would assume. Again, that, we haven't studied that part yet.
In that study, Dennis, what do we talk about, industrial usage compared to residential usage, all those kinds of things?
Yes, we will.
We look at rate increases, so it's not like the general user's going to get, put all this on them, because if industrial uses a percentage higher, they'll be charged for that.
And that, they'll all be taken into account, residential, commercial, and industry, all three of those groups.
When do you think the last major improvement or last major project was, I mean?
We had, oh, we had a couple of different ones, in two thousand and ten, we did the regional booster station up there, two thousand and three and four, we did the, the collector well, and we also did the two filter, we added two additional filters at that time. In ninety-eight, ninety-nine, we, we did all the electrical, we were on, I think it was a twenty-three-thousand-volt system, we had getting people out of Omaha, we did, we changed all electrical components to four-eighty volts, so we can work on them, but that was a big one, and we replaced some pumps, added the zone-two pumps in that ninety-eight, ninety-nine timeframe, so that was our big one. Other than that, it was probably, East Plant, we did a lot of upgrades in, I think about ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-six, we built the two-million-gallon reservoir out north.
That was ninety-six, you said?
Ninety-six, yeah.
Ninety-six, yeah.
So that was some of the bigger ones, I know eighty-four, they had a very large one at these plants. You know, we've done, we've done painting on some of the tanks, and then last, two thousand and twelve, we did the two million, we had some damage on that roof at that time, if you guys recall that, but we had to redo some of the, the tractor portions, because they had failed.
I just, I just have a statement that I hope you stay on as a consultant for a long time, because-
Appreciate that.
The history that you just gave right there, that's invaluable.
I appreciate that. Any other questions?
I just feel like it's important that we make sure it's well-stated, that this isn't a want, but a need for the community, right? Because it's a substantial amount of money, obviously, you stated you have, there is money in your account, in the accounts to offset that, but, and then by stating what improvements were done over the years, you see that maintenance is regular, and it just happened to be, right, bear with me, I'm a carpenter, so it's like we need an addition and a remodel all at the same time, so, you know, it just, it happened, it's kind of hitting, from the way you're presenting, it's hitting kind of-
If anybody wants to go out, I know Chad loves to give tours, I mean, I think we keep those plants up really good, I mean, we've, whoever's been out there, I mean, we do a very good job of that.
Dennis, the design costs, the cost for the design services contract, we're considering here, was budgeted for within the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and it looks like it was about, just over nine-hundred thousand. Is that accurate? I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, we, so in the twenty-twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three budget, it was nine-hundred-one-thousand-three-hundred-fifty dollars. Chad, nine, Steve, we looked through that design contract quite a bit, we'll take some things out, so the cost, the design cost today is seven-hundred-thirty-thousand-four-hundred-seven dollars, what the contract is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or discussion?
I just got a comment, is that with what Councilman Arns and Clausen said, I couldn't agree more, this is the one utility that none of us can live without, I mean, we, we have to have water to sustain, so I think these, these are positive improvements to, to continue growing Norfolk the way we have.
I have no questions.
I agree. I think it's also worth noting that it's probably a resource that we could use a little more wisely sometimes, given that the, the stressors put on the system by watering yards is quite significant, as we've learned, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion, Council? Any public input? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-three, would look for a motion to consider approval to purchase three replacement police vehicles for a hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-eight dollars for a lower price than the state of Nebraska contract number fifteen-seven-seven-eight OC from Courtesy Ford in Norfolk.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, we'll hear from our Police Chief, Don Miller.
Mayor and Council, the replacement of police cruisers is something that's generally on consent agenda when it's within our current budget. What we, we ran into a situation here where, while it's, the one that we're looking at is lower than our state contract, it is more than what we had budgeted. And to give you a little bit of background, the way, on the way this works, each year, you know, we try to anticipate what vehicles are going to cost us, of course, the actual purchase is quite, is a month's, if not a year, out into the future, and we go based off what we usually have for state contract prices. This current year, for this current purchase timeframe, we had budgeted thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars for each of three replacement cruisers. That was based on the information we knew at the time, unfortunately, with all of the supply and demand with vehicles, the state contract came in much higher than what we anticipated, at forty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars for each vehicle. Now, when we talked to the person, we got through the state contract, they said that that is a direct result of supply and demand with the dealership, not the dealership, but the Ford manufacturer, and they're anticipating to get caught up sometime in twenty-twenty-four, but until then, since they don't have the vehicles to work with, they have reduced their discount to government from several thousand dollars to five-hundred dollars. So that's why our state contract went up more than the normal. Another thing that we like to do is, we like to try to buy local when we can and work with our local dealers. In this case, we reached out to Courtesy Ford, and they were able to quote us forty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars for cruisers, which is a little bit less, but I need to point out that the Courtesy Ford vehicle is a twenty-twenty-three model, state bid is twenty-twenty-four model, based on their projections. Twenty-three models are perfectly fine for us, we don't need to have a twenty-twenty-four model, so if we can save some money by getting a twenty-twenty-three model locally, not only can we buy local, but we can also save some money out of our budget. Now, if for some reason, we're dealing with supply and demands, if for some reason these twenty-twenty-three models all of a sudden become unavailable, because I have to order them and manufacture them, then Courtesy Ford would come back and say, well, these are the price for our twenty-twenty-fours. If that would occur, we would again compare that to our state bid prices and see which one's best, trying to save the most, the most money along the way. But because this is above our budgeted amount, we wanted to bring it to the full council so that you can ask any questions and you understand the details behind that. Now, I've had some questions, just a little bit of a, a background with our cruisers, we have, we, we replace three police cruisers every year, and we're in a, you know, because we have that three-year rotation, some people think we buy a vehicle, we put it into the, drive it, and then we get rid of it. And instead, what we have done, and this has been a development over multiple years of figuring out what works best, when we first get our police cruisers in, we just got three of them in from a year ago that were ordered, we don't put them into patrol right away, what we do is, we use them for school cars, detectives drive them, anybody needs a vehicle to run around, they put some miles on the vehicles so that they, you know, to get them broke in and to get some extra time out of them before they, before they get worn out. Then the next year, we do that for a year, and then they get rotated into patrol, they get driven as patrol vehicles for three years, and it's no secret, we're hard on vehicles, they're either idling or we're driving them hard. So we give three hard years on them, and then when it comes time for them to rotate out, we work with our fleet services, try to identify the, the mechanical roadworthiness of the vehicles. If we have vehicles that are still roadworthy, then we'll assign the, other divisions in the city will drive them, you see- the city, we'll drive them, you see some out here for the city offices. Fire chief drives one, a 2017 with 127,000 miles on it. I drive a 2016. So these are all vehicles that had gone through, but they, but they still had some life in them. So we want to make sure we get as much life out of our vehicles as we can during the course of the time that we have them. So while we talk about a three-year rotation, like I said, I've got a 2016, and it's still going strong, and it might not look the best, but it's still mechanically sound, and we'll keep on driving it. So I'm, I'm asking for a motion to continue with the purchase for the local ones, lower than the state bid, but still over what our budgeted amount is. And if you have any questions on all that.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
What was the budgeted amount again?
We budgeted $38,375 for each of the three vehicles. And that should be in the staff notes of your packets. And then the state contract was $46,349 for a 2024 model, and then local dealership can get the 2023 models for $43,648. They, they don't have the 2024 models to give us a price right now, they're working with what their current production lines are.
I just, I called Don today, and I asked him questions about this, and he just reiterated everything we talked about today, so thanks for taking the time to talk to me and explain it to me, and thanks for being stewards of, of the vehicles and the money we're spending. I don't feel like we're wasting it anywhere, and there's valuation of that vehicle, we're using it and we're keeping it, and so, thank you.
And we do typically try to buy local when, when possible, when these situations arise. Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, any public input? Hearing and seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 34, would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to Municipal Pipe Tool Company, LLC of Hudson, Iowa, for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation, Omaha Avenue, Norfolk, 2022 project for an amount of $768,436.75.
All of consideration.
Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, we'll hear from Steve, oh, from Dennis Watts, I'm sorry.
Dennis Watts, again. So this is for a, we've talked, I think, quite a bit about this one here, but I'll give just a little background on this. This is some, basically, is a corrugated metal pipe that had a, has about an inch and a half tar lining on it. It's installed in 1974, and what's happening is some of that's starting to delamination off the, you know, separate from the metal pipe. It takes, this is a very important line for us. If you look at the map behind you, I'm not a very good drawer, but you see, I kind of shaded that out. So this sewer that we're replacing is in the black at the very bottom of the, of the, map there, but that shaded part, so all the sewage from that area, that's an approximate area, all goes through that pipe. So it's a very important pipe for us, it's one of the first steps in one of our, we have three interceptors, this is one of them here, but a very, very important part for us, because it does take sewage from all that. This, we've divided this into, this, this line actually starts at 19th and Omaha, right here, and that ends up going down all the way down to 2000 Logan. We just finished up with the, we broke this into three different spots. One was Milk Specialties, 10th and Omaha to 4th and Monroe. We replaced that entire pipe that got installed, finished up maybe June of '22. This part here, and on that one, we had to replace the pipe because it was too far gone. This one here, we're able to reline, which is very fortunate for us because there's a lot of pavement. This runs all from basically Earl May to Milk Specialties, it's, a lot of it's in the, the north, kind of the north terrace, but it does run through a lot of pavement. It'd be kind of a traffic nightmare, pavement's expensive, so we're very fortunate that we can line this one. But basically, so this would be a first part, the other part of it, it's a, we did have in our CIP in 2014, we already had this at $950,000. So what we're looking to do is a CIPP with this, and what that'll actually be is basically a pole, it's, it looks like a fiberglass sock through the, through the sewer main, and then they cure it and they cut out the service, like there's ten services on this pipe here. But it should last, the anticipated life is about 75 years. We did only have one bid on this, but we felt it was a very good bid. We had, like I said, in 2014, and we had $950 in a '22, '23 budget, we had $1.29 million. So we felt we had extremely good bid on this one here. Again, I don't say everything's critical, but this was, you know, this is a very big need for us also. If it fails much more, we'd have to eventually replace it.
Replace it.
It'd be very expensive. So like I said, that we're looking for, we have this down as, it'd be done, if you guys choose to approve it, the substantial is September 15th, and final is, I think, October 1st-ish, somewhere in that neighborhood, so it would be completed this summer.
How much more life is predicted for this lining to give to the...
Probably 75 years.
75 years.
And we just replaced the other one with some clay and some, and that should also last 75 to 100 years. So we got these first two sections completed, if this one gets, gets completed.
By doing the lining, I've watched, I've watched videos on them before, it's kind of amazing technology, really is. What would be the, what's your anticipated cost savings from, versus lining the pipe versus waiting and replacing? You know, are you thinking, is it, what did it...
I do have the engineer here, Seth Langley from Olson. Seth, do you remember, did we have that, I don't remember those dollars.
To replace.
Approximately twice the amount, so...
Twice the amount, okay.
I guess we'd probably be touching that 2 million.
Right.
I was going to say twice, but it's, pavement is getting very expensive, as everybody knows. So I think we got a very good bid on this here.
Sorry, Dennis, didn't we discuss also, like, the longevity, even if it was replaced, is still approximately 75 years, am I thinking correctly?
Yeah. And it could be, no, and, and that's correct, we've talked about that. We found in Norfolk that, because we usually use clay on all of our interceptor lines, is what we try to do, we've got a lot of clay that was put in early 1900s. I don't know if people remember, we just replaced one in, I think it was 2012 or '14, we had a line that was installed in '18, it showed up on 1890's map, 21-inch, so clay lasts very good, but, so we should get 75 at least out of this and the clay we're putting So this will be the, you know, to get this done, this doesn't have construction services, there'd be one more, if this gets passed tonight, there'd be probably another, we'd be looking for a construction services contract with Olson. I wouldn't anticipate that would not exceed 15,000, 20,000, but there will be a construction observation that the city will participate in, but there will be another one coming though.
No, it will be with Olson?
Yes.
How are we paying for this, Dennis?
This will be through bonds.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions, comments from public? Seeing and hearing done, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 35, would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to Rutchens Construction Incorporated, Tilden, Nebraska, for the Northeast Industrial Utility Extension, Norfolk, Nebraska, 2022 project for an amount of $1,467,124. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion, your honor. Second.
Motion second, again, Dennis.
All right, I'll talk one last time, then I'll be done here. So this is for the utility extension to, basically, it'll go from about Norfolk Iron and Metal, and it'll go north approximately a heavy half mile to the new Norfolk Soy Crush plant. So basically, there's, it's bid in three different sections, there's approximately 3,120 feet of water main, about 2,440 feet of PVC, and then also this force main, and then also a sewage lift station. We did receive three bids on this project. The high bid was $1,864,116. Rutchens had the low bid of $146,121,467,124. Our estimate was 1.864 million, so we got a fairly decent bid, we had three bidders on the project. Let's see, if you guys recall too, so since this is going to the soy, the soy, we do get reimbursed by the soy crush on all of our dollars. So far, they've been, we've had probably three or four reimbursements, always within 30 days. So this does get reimbursed back to the city. The, you know, all these costs, I just mentioned, the 1,600,000, 1,467,124 would be reimbursed.
And when, when being reimbursed by a company like that, are you submitting, are you paying the, the cost of improvements, then submitting?
Yes.
So do you cover the costs and then submit and pay it back?
That's what we're doing, yeah.
Okay.
And they're, they've been very good, I'm just saying, we, they have in the contract, it's an agreement, 30 days, usually within that 20 days, we've been getting reimbursed, we've turned in, I think, two or three, three of them, three, it's just three, so it's got to be three. But anyway, so I guess we'd like to see this go through, the work we plan on starting the, probably within, say, two months or so, on the water, and the sewer could be a little bit later. And we're, we have to get easements from Norfolk Iron and Metal, and then also New Core, because water will go on the Norfolk Iron and Metal and sewer on the east side on New Core property. Any questions, that's kind of a, maybe a straightforward one, but we do get reimbursed all these dollars.
I guess just one comment, is this, Randy, do you wish this is how everything went, and these reimbursements is fast?
So far, they've been very good. Any other questions?
Necessary investment for industrial growth out in that area, so. Any other questions or discussion, council? Public input? Hearing none, please vote.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Dennis.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 36, would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5817 authorizing issuance of public safety tax anticipation bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $750,000.
I'll make consideration of ordinance 5817.
Second.
Motion and a second, and to hear some background on this, Randy Gates, city finance officer.
This is to fund three things, an ambulance, the architect fees on the police building expansion, and there's a little bit in there for our share of an outdoor warning siren that we're getting grant funds from. The bond issue's expected to be $680,000, as shown on the sources and uses of funds in the agenda packet. The ordinance authorizes a maximum issuance size of $750,000, a maximum true interest cost of 6%. The ordinance provides for a final interest rate, true interest cost, and aggregate principal amount to be determined in written designation, signed by the mayor or finance officer. A 20-year bond issue with a five-year call provision. I'd answer any questions. And also, Bruce Lefort's here, and he can answer questions.
Yeah, I was looking through the packet, Randy, I was having a hard time figuring out what was allocated to what, like, how much was for the ambulance, what, and then what was for the police plans, and then how much for the outdoor warning, how that's split up.
The ambulance is $200,976. The architecture fees are $367,000, and $10,589 for the outdoor warning sirens, giving a total of $668,565.
So the architect fees were 367, is that right? Is that what it was?
I'll say that again.
The architect fees were 367?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just clarifying.
$367,000, that's correct.
Okay. And there would be a complete set of plans, then?
I believe those are 90% plans.
Mayor and council, if I recall, the only portion that's not included in there is when actual construction were to take place, it does not include architect to be watching.
On site, right.
Yeah, on site, that will come at a different agreement. But my understanding is, yes, this is a complete set of plans.
Any other questions?
I just have one observation. I understand totally why, I was going through some of the, give me minutes, I understand why this went this way, it doesn't make sense, this is what those types of bonds are used for, right, and how you would set this sort of deal up, because you don't have the resources to fund that right in front of you. I know that I was pushing, we've been pushing very hard for our council priority dollars to be, you know, obviously freed up, we worked hard to get this building paid off, and that freed up those dollars, so they're sitting there. So I understand the thought process behind it. I know that this police, the police department, the addition, you know, was subject to a vote from the public, obviously, and that failed by 70%. I think there was two arguments when we had that out there. The one argument was incurring indebtedness, and the other argument was that these are projects brought before council, and it was the less, the least amount of burden your base could absorb by, by bundling them all together. That was the argument that was out there. Because you could spread it out over a bigger base than you could just your Norfolk tax base. Well, with that being said, indebtedness was something that was, folk pushed at us, saying, listen, we don't want that, we don't want that. Maybe it was the way it was bundled, maybe it shouldn't have been put that way, obviously we need to sit down again and look how we're going to move forward, because I believe the police department is a major player, and I feel like the community has stated that maybe we didn't want some of these other things, but we do want this. That being said, I feel like we should not be putting interest on the cost of these plans over the next five years with a balloon payment due. I believe I read that right, is balloon payment due in five years, or you could pay it off in five?
This is a 20-year bond issue.
But it doesn't have a five-year clause where you can pay off in five?
Yes, there's a call provision.
That's, that's what I was getting.
Five-year call.
So mine would be to take that money and either look for some capital expenditures that we've already put out there in this year's budget, or look at council priority dollars to pay for those plans. And I'm, again, I, I get why, because that's going to tie up a significant amount of council priority dollars, which in fact would then maybe hurt moving forward on some of the other projects, like with, maybe moving forward by funding bonds to finance the, the addition to the police department, because you're going to take funds out of there. But that's just, it's just an observation, you know, that's just me saying that, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I'm not, again, looking at subcommittee minutes, made total sense why it was put that, forth that way, so. I'll stop rambling.
No, I support what you're saying, Shane, I think that to borrow money on something that we don't even know is going to happen, but we're paying interest on, we're taking out a loan for something that we think it's going to happen, we hope it's going to happen, but it's not happened yet, and we're paying on a loan for those plans, when we have the cash to pay it off and say, hey, they're paid for, let's, let's move on and not pay interest on something like that. That would make a lot of sense to me. As bad as it would hurt to write a check for 367, I still think it's the right thing to do.
If ARPA, I don't know if ARPA funds could be looked at that either, you know, but I'm just saying, I'm just, there's, I think there's some resources we could look at.
Randy, what is the interest rate, or proposed interest rate for...
The interest rate, I believe, that we've got in the projections we got from Bruce was a little under 5%.
I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with you, Shane, it's, in subcommittee, it was a discussion, obviously, of paying that off or not with, with council priority dollars. To be honest, I'd stand behind you if that's the way we decided to do it too, it probably has to be a, a change in this, consideration of ordinance, but it definitely was a discussion, it's, it's a, it was a tough one of what's the right priorities on where your money should go to pay off something like that, and is council priority dollars best used in a different situation, knowing you're going to have other things coming up. You know, we have increase in cost just on police cars, right? And so what else are we going to have increasing costs on that we're going to have to use that to possibly pay? And so what else are we gonna have increasing costs on that we're gonna have to use that to possibly pay for? How much this cuts into what we have, I don't have a clue, I'm not sure what we have exactly for total council priority dollars. But I think paying off this building and opening up those possibilities was a darn good thing, and I could stand behind something like that of paying these off and bonding the rest of this, which by all means probably shouldn't take twenty years anyway. You know, five years, we should be able to pay that off pretty quick.
That's why when I stated that after you go through the minutes, it's really, there is no real bright answer, because if you take the argument that this is the smart, the best way to go, you know that you're taking dollars that the citizens put out there, I don't know, in twenty, oh, twenty twenty, twenty, or two thousand two, I think it was, maybe, when council priority dollars were set up, but. And are you allocating those in the right spot, because they're kind of the, really the, they're the dollars that are there that are easily to move in any direction in our community, if somebody needs something. So it does take away from that, but I feel like, like I stated, it's maybe, it is, it'd be nice to get that paid for, be done with it, no interest on that, especially with the way the vote went. I think it just makes sense.
I guess my only question is, how do we pay for the bond if we were to do the project? Where does that money come from?
Well, I believe what will happen here is if we, we'll get these plans paid for, and then we'll go into further discussion about what's gonna happen with the police, the state, the police department's addition and remodel. I believe that it's, everybody, I can't speak for everybody, but I know for the community, it's an important deal, and I feel like this, as accounts, we're gonna move forward with plans, they may not look the same, maybe it won't happen the same, but we will move forward with plans on how it will happen. You've got to realize, too, this is a one-time payment, right? And then the following year, those funds will be recollected into that account. So it does hurt you initially, but you can, the funds will be back in that account the next fiscal. So yeah, maybe it messes up some projects or something, but it is a one-time kind of a, you know, and maybe, just looking at it that way, it's not the end of the world, so.
What, Randy, what is the status of council priority dollars right now? Can you give us that number?
I believe, let me look at this, it should just take me a second to find that. Well, it would have just taken me a second, but I see Excel is not responding when I'm trying to load that up. I believe.
I thought it was around six.
Around six hundred thousand. And I do, to reiterate, the subcommittee discussion on this, as I recollect it, this was fashioned this way to keep some of those council priority dollars whole as a rainy day fund of sorts. As we've used it, because, yes, we've sought, we've worked pretty hard to build up an emergency reserve within the budget, but council priority has been one of those first places that we've typically gone when there are unexpected gaps in the budget. And I think the ultimate conclusion by the subcommittee to move this forward was to keep this within public safety anticipation bonds, because it, it fits and is eligible for that, and to keep more of the council priority dollars whole if needed as a rainy day mechanism. That's how I remember the discussion.
Are we having the budget for council priority dollars, unspecified council priority dollars of seven hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars?
We're also looking at, if you, the sales tax anticipation and where it's at right now is greater than we anticipated at this time also. So I feel like even into next fiscal, there could be somewhat of a surplus going into next fiscal with where sales tax is right now. So I mean, I don't, I'm not really that nervous about, I'm not, I'm honestly not an accountant, but I do bug you a lot, I know that, but. To me, looking at, seeing our budget over the years, I feel that we're sitting in a place right now where this would be okay to look at. And it may have to go from some different expenditures and not from council priority dollars, but that is something we can look at.
Shane, are you also thinking the two hundred ninety-six thousand for the ambulance as well?
You know, I wasn't in that, I was, I just, I wasn't in the subcommittee, but I did list, I read, you know, I read through it, but. If you look into what, when you read, when, like what Josh stated, you know, there was a considerable thought put into what goes on with the council priority dollars, and they didn't, whoever was in that meeting, they were very concerned about allocating those resources, because then we could get in a situation where we don't have the funds down the road, so. I didn't, my whole thing was, this was something that didn't pass, you know, from a voted on, public voted project, and I just kind of felt like maybe that's, the buck needed to stop here and not push it down the road with interest on top of money that wasn't passed, that's all.
Do you think that means the project doesn't get done, though?
No, not at all, I think now, I think we're spurring with this, we're spurring talk about trying to figure out a way to make this project happen. I'm confident with, you know, looking into some of the, again, I'm not an accountant here, but with past budgets and looking at what sales tax revenue is doing this year, and how city staff has managed the budget over the last eight years to generate a emergency fund in our account that's changed drastically since I've gotten here. I think it was maybe a little over a million, and now it's at, what, seven to eight million for emergency funding at the beginning balance, right? So I feel like, I feel like the way the staff has, the way Randy and his staff have designed our budget, when you see sales tax at a peak, there is lateral movement within the budget, and I feel like some of this could be absorbed through capital expenditures into twenty fourteen's budget, or twenty twenty-four's budget, twenty twenty-four's budget, and maybe would all have to be allocated out of council priority dollars. But again, I don't know if you can pay out that council priority dollars and then refund your account from another, I don't, I'm guessing probably not. So everything's gotta be allocated at the end of the year, so, just, and again, I'm just speculating, so.
Randy, I do have a follow-up question, so the outdoor sirens, what dollar amount did you have on that?
It was ten thousand.
Oh, okay, so it's a small number. But that is a grant, that is actually.
Yes, that's our match towards a grant.
Okay, that's a small amount, though, that.
Yes.
All right, council, so there's underlying question before you, we've had discussion, any further discussion? Any public input?
With the complexity of this conversation, would this be grounds to look for more over table than a recommendation?
It's, it's any member's prerogative to table anything at any time to take a vote on it.
And then I guess the other question, that two hundred ninety-six thousand for that ambulance, was that in budget, or is that over budget? Why is that?
I believe we had that budgeted for less than that. What I think we'd probably do if we don't want to, what I'd recommend we do if we don't want to issue the public safety tax anticipation bonds for the architecture is maybe just wait and include that, because we'll have such a small amount, about a three hundred thousand dollar bond issue, just wait. And we've got more things in the budget down the road for public safety tax anticipation bonds, and reimburse ourselves later with a bigger public safety tax anticipation bond issue, because three hundred thousand is getting to be a pretty small bond issue.
And you're likely not to find as favorable a rate as you can with a smaller proposal, is that correct, Randy?
Yes, and you've got, you know, the same amount of time in administering a small bond issue as you do a big bond issue. So normally, we don't issue twenty-year bonds for three hundred thousand dollars.
Right. Jim?
Jim McKenzie, good evening, I just wanted to support the idea of using your council priority dollars to pay for that, instead of issuing debt for that and paying interest for five or twenty years. The other thing that I want to bring up is by not issuing that debt now, it frees up your ability to issue public safety bonds in the future, because you have limits on how much you can issue. So by paying cash for this, that if you do end up finalizing the police expansion, then you can use that additional ability to issue public safety bonds in the future for that. So it makes more sense to use cash now and then pay, issue debt in the future if you decide to do it versus issuing debt now on something you don't know if you're gonna do or not, so, just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Any other discussion, council? Or comments from public?
I'd be in favor of tabling, because I think there's some more discussion to be had.
Second.
Kate?
Is that official, is that an official motion?
Sorry about that, I would make a motion to table, item.
Ordinance fifty-eight seventeen?
Right.
Motion to table, was there a second?
Yes, Corey.
Motion second, okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-eight seventeen is placed on the table.
Item thirty-seven would look for a motion to consider approval of an engineering services contract with Minelli Wagner and Associates Incorporated for the asphalt overlay project two thousand twenty-three for an amount of fifty-one thousand one hundred seventy dollars.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramus.
Mayor and council, recently, we've received several complaints on Omaha Avenue between twenty-fifth and forty-fifth. That would be down along, oh, it kind of starts at Continental there, where that concrete portion of Omaha ends and it goes to asphalt, extends about one and three-quarter miles west to Forty-Fifth Street, and then about a quarter mile south on Forty-Fifth Street. We're starting to see a lot of fatigue in certain areas of the asphalt, the Forty-Fifth Street side is showing, actually, we've got washboarding going on there, I think we've been out there grinding that a little bit. There's other areas of fatigue along there, some heavy there at Thirty-seventh Street, again, heavy at Twenty-Fifth Street. Some of it is base related, we're starting to lose bearing capacity in the base, otherwise, it's just general fatigue of the asphalt. But it is, it is progressing a little more rapidly than what we would typically see. What you have in front of you is a design contract with Minelli Wagner to go out there and do some coring, both in the asphalt structure and in the subbase structure. Put together a design, provide us an engineer's estimate based on, based on what we find out there. Ultimately, we would use that then to structure probably an overlay project within our next budget cycle, and in the meantime, we would just kind of continue to perform some maintenance on that to keep that drivable. We also anticipate kind of outside of this, doing a little bit of work down there at Twenty-Fifth Street on that concrete portion with city staff, just to stabilize, to stabilize that and possibly reconstruct that intersection at Twenty-Fifth and Omaha this coming summer. If it did continue to deteriorate at a faster rate and would need to be actually looked for a mill and overlay this year, we would bring that back for conversation at a later time. We do have dollars, should we have to do something like that, either in our line item one, our CHAF line item one, which is maintenance by contract, we've got a million dollars in that budget, which I believe would cover this work, or we do have some other mill and overlay in our CHAF budget, could have a combination about redirecting towards this. But the intent right now is just to get it designed, do the, do the testing on there to see what we have, and then develop, based on the design, develop an engineer's estimate for budgeting purposes.
So in the CHAF budget, this one was up to bat, or it's getting moved up to bat, because?
This is, yeah, this is not in our, in our CHAF budget right now, so this would be something that we'd have to come back, you know, if it did continue to fail, and fail much faster than what I'm thinking it's, it's going to do, then we'd have to reconsider that.
Okay.
And like I say, we do have some dollars in there that we could redirect to this without impacting other projects.
You said that was about how much, you thought?
My rough estimate on this particular project is somewhere around nine hundred thousand.
And you thought you might have bought a million dollars?
We've got a million dollars in line item one on the CIP that we potentially could redirect here.
Stephen, do you know if we have a, will have a batch plant in the area in the next year or two?
We will, last year, the county work that was bid out, the asphalt mill and overlay work, that was Western Engineering, I believe, got that bid, they did not make it into town last year, and so the county is currently getting ready to bid out their twenty-three construction, and so we potentially could see two plants in here, depending on how that bid goes.
Thank you.
Steve, I got a question on the, on the coring, I guess, if we're gonna mill and overlay, do we need to do coring throughout that stretch, or is the coring just at those intersections to, I guess I don't quite understand.
Well, the coring will tell us, it'll give us a good idea what we have there for section thickness to begin with, and then based on that thickness of existing asphalt structure, we can determine a structural value to that from a paving perspective. The other thing it does, and we would be bringing probably another testing agency to the table for a small contract, that washboarding that's going on down at Forty-Fifth is likely due to high asphalt content that was in that mix design. We would have to decide exactly how to deal with that based on the oil content that's in there. So one thing that I'm interested in doing is sending a, sending a sample out, whatever that sample looks like, to a testing firm, I'm not sure if there's any here in the state that do that, there might be. The testing firm that we're currently using here in town for several of our projects, I think they send their stuff to Des Moines, Iowa for extraction testing. The only other place I know that does it for sure is the DOT, probably does some extraction testing. But that's, if we're gonna consider any sort of a recycled component to that asphalt, we'd want to understand the asphalt content in there so we could appropriately structure the mix design for recycled.
Steve, I do have a question, so if this was approved, construction would begin potentially when on that?
I would prefer to see us get the design done, understand just the, how much asphalt is there, you know, we're gonna be just doing a two-inch mill and overlay on ninety percent of it, and maybe a full-depth mill and base restoration, base improvements, or subgrade improvements on ten or fifteen percent of it. So that's what I want to understand right now, my intent would be to build it into the next budget cycle and probably bid this out, probably with the county through an interlocal agreement about this time next year for twenty twenty-four construction.
Okay.
If it, you know, I do expect we're gonna continue to see some of that washboarding on Forty-Fifth, we might need to get out there with some maintenance and do some work on a couple areas that we are seeing extensive rutting starting to occur right around Thirty-seventh Street, but I think, I think we can do some stuff with maintenance to get us through the next twelve months.
The reason I ask is because if it was gonna be a fall of twenty-three, if that would interfere at all with that West Plant Improvement Project with those, you know, the million, two million dollar tank being built, if there's any?
Oh. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so, these mill and overlay projects tend to go pretty fast, we wouldn't be going west of Forty-Fifth, which I think the vertical well or the production well will be on Thirty-seventh Street, but we, ultimately, we coordinate that with the county and.
I'll just check in timelines.
Any further questions?
Steve, with that fifty-one thousand, in subcommittee, I think it's the same thing, thirty-two thousand of it is, and then eighteen thousand.
Construction, yeah, thirty-two thousand of it's for construction administration services, that's the onsite test, onsite inspection. That's the onsite test, onsite inspections that would be done by Minnelli Wagner during construction. The actual design component was...
Like eighteen or so?
Eighteen, yeah. Eighteen thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand was the design component. Overall, as a percentage of construction, it's pretty low, pretty low cost for design services.
Any other questions? Further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item thirty-eight, would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to A and R Construction Company of Plainview, Nebraska for the West Michigan Avenue and Eighth Street, Street and Utility Improvements Project for an amount of two million nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll make a motion to approve and award a contract to A and R Construction Company of Plainview.
Second.
Motion second. Again, background on this from Steve Ramus.
Mayor and counsel, the long-awaited phase two of Michigan Avenue. This is phase two. I don't remember exactly when phase one was done. I think it was back around two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve that phase one of this project was done. This is going to provide some substantial drainage improvements along Eighth and along Michigan Avenue. It will reconstruct Michigan Avenue from Thirteenth to Wood and from Tenth to Seventh. It will reconstruct Eighth Street from Omaha Avenue up to Michigan. And again, there are substantial drainage improvements in there. Michigan Avenue, we are also replacing water and sewer in there as well since we're doing a full removal and replacement on the paving. We had three bidders. You can see their bids range from the low of, with A and R, at two million nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents, to a high with BX Civil of three million seven hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents. There was a third bidder in there, Penrol, at just under three-point-six million. So bids were good. The engineer's estimate on the project was three million one hundred and seventy thousand. So bids came in, the low bid came in underestimated and in budget.
Steve, explaining this has been in the queue for a while, and it is paid through with the CHAF tax, correct?
It is paid with CHAF. There is, this is a bonded project, probably about three years ago, if I recall correctly. There was some conversation about salvaging some bonding capacity to apply towards this project because it was delayed from the original schedule. That, not to regenerate old history, but that delay was substantially due to the Norfolk Avenue from First to Cottonwood project, the increase in costs on that.
East Norfolk Avenue Bridge project?
Yeah.
Great. That did, that project did change a lot of the direction of the way things went.
We would expect construction to start depending on the winter, somewhere mid-late March, early April. Completion date for the heavy drainage portion along Omaha Avenue, there's a large drainage system that'll come down Eighth Street and tie over into corporation gulch along Omaha. They need to get that in, and they need to get Eighth Street reconstructed by October first of this year. And then they have until, I believe it's October first of next year to finish Michigan Avenue. If they do dig into Michigan Avenue this year, if they figure they're that far ahead, they do have to wrap up and pave and get tied in, anything that they open up this year.
Steve, fair to say that drainage was never quite right on this project.
No, it's the lower, it's the lower end of town. It's the old end of town. So it's got smaller drainage systems in there that have just aged out as the community's grown upstream. And so we're putting in some pretty large damage forms.
This is a project I've been here in about for ten-plus years, since getting on the council in two thousand twelve. Any other questions or discussion? Public input. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item thirty-nine, would look for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number fifty-eight eighteen vacating part of the platted cul-de-sac on Andy's Lake Road lying north of the North Rightofway of Andy's Lake Road as platted in Andy's Lake Development Number Two in the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section Two, Township Twenty-three North, Range One West of the Sixth PM, Madison County, Nebraska. It's easy for me to say. Look for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of ordinance number fifty-eight eighteen. Second.
Motion and second. And Steve, once again, some background on this, please.
Mayor and counsel, Andy's Lake Road originally terminated in a cul-de-sac on the east side, the far east side there. Today, that road is a T-intersection. It goes north and south where Andy's Lake Road terminates. So there's this little circle that used to be the cul-de-sac on the north side of Andy's Lake Road, right there at the T-intersection, that no longer serves a purpose. We were requested by Dick Johnson to support that if we had expressed any concerns. We do not have any concerns towards the abandonment of that. Dick is here to answer any questions as well, if you have any for him.
What is, what is our involvement in this if they're just in our two-mile, nine-mile annex?
My understanding is they're just in our two-mile jurisdictional area. So we're asked to...
We don't maintain? We don't do anything with this road or cul-de-sac, correct?
We do not.
If I may, there's no cul-de-sac there.
There's no, there's no physical cul-de-sac there now.
It got built, but it never got built.
Correct.
And so the property that's highlighted is real right now?
Dick, we'd have to come forward, please.
Dick Johnson, Madison County Highway Superintendent. We got requested to vacate this area that's under consideration because it's basically a county road. The law says that the county can't vacate a road unless the city concurs with the vacation. And that's why we're all here, among other things. But basically, the cul-de-sac was never built. The right-of-way was platted and dedicated to the public. And when it's dedicated, that transfers title to the public. In this case, it would have been Madison County. We're basically giving them back title to the land. We don't, the county doesn't have any use for it. The city doesn't have any use for it. The landowners think they have, so there's no reason for the county to have it. And all we're asking for is your concurrence with this.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Any questions, counsel? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance for the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to vacate a portion of Andy's Lake Road cul-de-sac located in Andy's Lake Development Number Two in the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section Two, Township Twenty-three North, Range One West of the Sixth PM, Madison County, Nebraska, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in Pamplor Forum.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight eighteen carries on first reading.
Hearing no opposition to this, I make a motion to suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third?
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight eighteen carries on second and third.
Item forty, would look for a motion to consider acceptance of the resignation of Councilmember Gary L. Jackson as Ward Three representative.
I'll make a consideration of the statute's resignation of Councilman Gary Jackson.
Second.
Motion and second. And Andy Colvin, City Administrator, would you give us a little background on this, please?
Sure. Mayor and counsel, well, as the agenda item states, Gary Jackson has submitted his resignation from the City Council due to some health issues. So what this is, is a formal acceptance of the council of that resignation, which will then kick off a process to fill that vacancy for the remainder of his term, which will go through twenty-twenty-four. That will be the next item on the agenda that between Danny and Brianna can outline that process. To you, it is a statutory process that we will follow for that. But this, again, will just formally accept Councilman Jackson's resignation.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. Yeah, unfortunate Councilman Jackson was not able to be here tonight. It was a pleasure serving with him. I found him always to be a hard-working, dedicated public servant who always had the best interest of the community at heart. So we'll miss Gary and wish him well as he deals with his health and medical issues. Any other discussion on this, counsel?
I think we all agree, Josh. I mean, he's a well-known constituent. He was participated in many, many discussions up here. He made sure he was around the town to listen to, listen to people and bring those questions forward to us. So reluctantly, we have to do this, but it's, he'll be missed. Hopefully, his health improves and we see him around a lot more.
I got to sit by him here for the last four years, and he liked to give me a hard time. So he'll be, he'll be missed. He's a good guy, or he is a good guy. I miss the councilman.
Served us well, Gary. Thank you. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And item forty-one, would look for a motion to consider approval to call a special city council meeting on Wednesday, February first, two thousand twenty-three, at five PM to fill the city council seat vacancy in Ward Three as a result of the resignation of Gary L. Jackson.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Second.
Motion second. Andy, do you want to say any more about the public process involved here?
I am not the expert on this process. It is laid out in state law. Brianna and Danny can go into more details on that. But my understanding is there's a window where you have to have a, you post the vacancy, and then anybody within that ward eligible can apply for that. In the past, the mayor and one or two council members and some staff has met with candidates and applicants for the position to fill that vacancy. And then ultimately, the mayor will make that recommendation to the council to fill that vacancy in that spot. And then the full council will approve that at that special meeting. And then the next regular meeting after that, that individual will be sworn in to fulfill the remainder of the term.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Ten-day application period, or what is the duration?
Yep. So the vacancy notice will be posted tomorrow, and then we will accept letters of intent and a resume through end of day, Thursday, January twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And those letters go to where?
To the, to this office, three oh nine North Fifth Street, or directed to the city administrator, or they can be emailed to me as well, and I'll acknowledge receipt of those. Obviously, you have to be a resident of Ward Three in order to be considered.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If no further discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. Last but not least, under special items on the council agenda, number forty-two. Okay, all right. I am going to propose, because we do have to get a couple of people on the line here from Norfolk Area Transit, that we do take just a five-minute recess. So we have time to do that. And we've been here a little bit, so we can, we can stretch our legs a little bit. I do need a formal motion to go into recess for five minutes.
Second.
Motion and second. No discussion, please. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Could have everybody sit down and return to the meeting. And so under special items, number forty-two, listed as discussion of operational and financial status of Norfolk Area Transit, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation with potential for a closed session for the protection of the public interest and/or to prevent the needless injury to the reputation of an individual for the following reasons: to discuss matters that are part of a current investigation regarding allegations of fraud, to evaluate the job performance of an individual when he or she has not requested such evaluation take place during a public meeting, and to hold a strategy session with respect to potential litigation against Norfolk Area Transit. So with this item, first, I'll have our city administrator, Andy Colvin, give a little background on why this is on the council agenda and why we're having this discussion tonight.
Sure. Mayor and counsel, thank you. Well, this really comes as a request from both elected officials and some of the feedback we've been hearing from the community as a whole. And I think we really wanted to provide an opportunity for the city council to hear an actual update from transit officials to find out what is the operational status, as you can see on the agenda. And I think answer some of those questions, you know, where are we now? What's happening? Where are we going? And what is going to happen? What does that future look like? And really just have this an opportunity for you to have a dialogue, an open dialogue with representatives from Norfolk Area Transit and get some clarity on where things are today. Now, just for background, very briefly, the City of Norfolk has been a contributor and has provided the local match for transit in Norfolk for decades. That is not an uncommon thing. In many cities, you will find it to be that way as well. So but it is, it is just that. It's just a partnership. We are a funder of that organization. We are not the organization itself. It is its own nonprofit organization with its own structure that has existed in some way, shape, or form for decades. Now, there's been changes over the years. There's been some different things that have happened with operations and management. But that has not been under the umbrella of the City of Norfolk. So I just wanted to make sure we provide that clarification there. But then, but we also have been a partner in that and a funder for many, many years. So with that, I guess I'll open it up to the mayor and council to kind of start this however you'd like to see. I do know we do have, I believe Corinne is here from the mobility management team, and she's got a presentation here. And I think that's probably a good place to start with our question and answers. Thank you.
Yeah. Corinne, as you come forward. Corinne Donahue, who is lead of the mobility management team that is in charge at Norfolk Area Transit at the time being, will give us a presentation and update. I think Andy stated, well, we wanted to have this opportunity for transit to give the community an update on where we are and the work that's ongoing to try to get to a place where we can provide the most critical services to the most vulnerable citizens in our community with transit, because I know the elected officials are hearing from many of them who have been left in the lurch by this unfortunate situation. So with that, Corinne, I'll let you introduce yourself and maybe your role here as part of the mobility management team, your partners on that team, and the work you're doing right now with transit.
Yes, happy to, mayor. And thank you, city council members, for hanging in there this evening. It's a late night. And we do have a brief presentation because we do want you to know the facts as much as we can state them. We are in an active investigation, as all of you are aware. With our team tonight, I'm Corinne Donahue. I work for Olson, and I am the project manager for Nebraska Department of Transportation Mobility Management Team. What a title. With me tonight, Katie Salerno from our team. We have several board members also here tonight with the Norfolk Area Transit Board. And then we also have... the North Fork Area Transit Board. And then we also have several representatives from our transit group that were laid off on, on January sixth. So they may be speaking after me. We appreciate the opportunity. Like I said, it's an active investigation, but we do want you to know what we have today, and we're happy to share that with you. On the line, on the phone tonight is Bob Born. Bob had surgery this week, so he was not able to be here in Norfolk. He's been on site for the last year, and many, many of you might have seen him. They actually had a very nice article in the Norfolk Daily News about our staff that are here most of the time. The other person that is very heavily involved on the back end with budgeting and management is A.T. Stoddard. Both of these gentlemen have over forty years of experience. Bob ran the transit agency in Ames, Iowa. If you've ever gone to the university there, he ran the transit system there. And then A.T. Stoddard has worked on the consultant side for over forty years. He actually just was at City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, council meeting on the line tonight, too. So he'll also be on the, on the line. Katie and Hannah from our Olson team are also heavily involved in going through receipts, looking through different paperwork that North Fork Area Transit has. For us to be eligible for reimbursements, we must have the appropriate backup documentation. So throughout the, these last several weeks, that's been our absolute focus, so that we can get those monies back here in town. You might say, what the heck is the mobility management team? You guys see on the screen, the northeast region is one of six regions with Nebraska Department of Transportation. The third bullet that's under the blue one says November twenty sixteen. And that was the first year that I was up in Norfolk, working at public open houses. And the main theme that we heard at those meetings were, we need more service in Norfolk. And this was throughout. We had a meeting in Hartington. We had a meeting in Norfolk. I think the other one might have been in Creighton, but I might be wrong about that one. But this city is the main activity center, as you guys know. We have hospitals here. We have medical services. We have jobs. We have, you know, campuses for training, for education. And so when this community in the northeast region said, you know, we need more service in Norfolk, Nebraska DOT sent our mobility management team to this region. We met in this city, and we had Ponca Express. We had Norfolk Public Transportation. That was our old name. We had the taxi service. We had Navigator that was running a route through here. So we had the players and elected officials at the table. We started working on this study in twenty nineteen. On the right-hand side of the screen is just a picture of the cover of that study. It was finished in twenty twenty-two. And the outcome of that study was, we need to have a flex route service in Norfolk. So our team since twenty twenty has actually been up here working with the transit agencies, both Norfolk Area Transit and Ponca Express, for over two years. Our specific job with the mobility management team over the last two years was, where are our bus routes going to go? Where's the stops? Who's going to manage this? How many people do we need? What's the budget? As you guys know, we have purple and yellow buses running all through town. That was the marketing crew that put, put the image of our service on the street. The flex route began less than a year ago. So April twenty twenty-two is when it started. We added services throughout the summer. We had Route Five that serves Madison County. That's Tyson, Lindsay, Newman Grove, that whole area, and was, was funded in portion by Madison County, too. Additional services, services were also implemented in the fall. We had the night lift service, and then we also had tripper service, all beginning over this last, like, six-month period. And Andy, thank you for the introduction, because North Fork Area Transit is a nonprofit agency. We're not part of the city, not part of the county. It's absolutely a different agency. Andy, I liked your word. You said decades, and you're right. It was since nineteen seventy, seventies. I think it was seventy, we're in three, seventy-two, I think. Anyway, but in September of twenty twenty-two, we celebrated fifty years of transit service in this community. Fifty years ago. I'm fifty-four, so fifty years, you know. So you sit there, and you think, you know, last week was the first week that we haven't had transit service for our community in fifty years. You know, it was a, it was a sad week. It was, you know, lots of calls, as you guys have had. The counties had those. We've had those. So, you know, if you move forward, one of the items we want to talk about is, what are we, what are we trying to do now? Where are we going to go with this? We also provided the flex route service. Those were the routes that were going around town, three different routes, the telelift, the night lift, and our Route Five. I think it's also really important to look at the goals of this agency that have been in place for over ten years. Affordable, safe transportation. That's what we want for our community. Strong community partnerships. You know, we have partnerships with Faith Regional. We have partnerships with Northeast Community College, Tyson, Great Dane. Those are all the people that have helped us become a success over fifty years. Third bullet, this is a critical one, maximize our resources. So every local dollar that comes in here, we want to bring the federal, we want to bring those state dollars back to Norfolk and the surrounding region. If they don't go here, they go somewhere. So we might as well have them come here. Let's see. And then the last one, enhance economic development in our community by connecting residents and visitors to jobs, services, educational facilities, training, et cetera. So just so those goals have been with our agency for a very, very long time. These are a couple of charts that, if you look, you know, amazing growth in five years to over two hundred and fifty percent. Last year, I mentioned seventy thousand annual one-way trips. That's about fifteen hundred passengers a week. So last week, we lost fifteen hundred trips, you know, in that particular one. This week, we're on Tuesday, you know. And so we are trying to find solutions to get this service back on the road. That is our goal here. This recent activity, the focus of this, the very top line, just to remind everyone in this room and our councilman and our mayor, that this is an active investigation, and North Fork Area Transit is represented by an attorney. He had another obligation this evening and was not able to be here, but we do know. He's very active with this, with this investigation. Since termination of the executive director, steps that have been taken by the North Fork Area Transit Board, as soon as the termination was complete by the board, they had to have a meeting to, you know, execute that termination. A local CPA firm was hired to take over all accounts, payables, receivables, the payroll, the financial audit. Every year, transit does an audit. It's mandated by the, by the city, also by the state. And then as the county, as, as a result of the allegations, Madison County also requested a financial audit. So this CPA is now handling all of our accounts, which has been really great. They've had those for about three and a half weeks. The, all of our accounts are going through them. The board began immediately working with the two banking institutions where we had accounts. Those banking institutions have been super supportive of the transit agency. They both advise the board that, you know, do what is best to structure the debt for this agency. And how, how that's resulted over the last three weeks is, both banking institutions agreed that we should have one bank. There should not be two for the future of our services. Last week, we actually received a donation that we were able to close one of the banks, and we now are restructured just at one bank. The sponsor that stepped forward to take care of that debt requested those funds go directly to one of the banks, and we absolutely made that happen. So just know that that happened within these last five days. So listening to what our attorneys are saying, listening to what our banking institutions are telling us. Third bullet, immediately reached out to NDOT in Lincoln, and thus you get me in front of you today in the mobility management team. We were on-site prior to this for planning services, routes, bus stops, and this. As I mentioned, Bob and A.T. on the phone have extensive experience of running transit agencies. Myself, I also have worked at a transit agency, but I've been on the consultant side, too. DOT asked if our team would want to come up here and help the Norfolk. Absolutely. We've been here for over five years. We want to see this happen and do what we can. Right now, as I mentioned, the last three and four weeks, reviewing accounts, invoices, the billings, the receipts, all of this must be in order. We must have the backup for us to receive the reimbursements from the state and federal funding. We hope by Friday of this week that we actually have one submittal to the state. We are still missing some of the backup documentation, and so our team is trying to work on that as we speak. The fifth bullet talks about coordination with Ponca Express. We are fortunate in Norfolk that we have two transit providers. Ponca Express is operated under the Ponca Tribe, and they have operated service for a very long time in Norfolk. They're a much smaller scale than we have with Norfolk Area Transit. So I know, just talking to the transit manager today, they've been overwhelmed with many calls. So I, I just offered our team whatever we can do to help, to answer calls, or whatever. We're happy to go and assist them, too. But they, they're doing everything, everything they can to help our passengers, which is what we need. The last bullet, number six. So sadly, and a very difficult decision, the board suspended service last Friday, no, sorry, on the sixth, whatever, however many days ago that was. The primary reason was to not incur any more debt, because the more we're spending, the deeper our hole was getting. It was a very sad day. A lot of people, they just couldn't believe we were closing the door, you know. And it is just suspended. We want to be very clear, because this Norfolk Transit Board, they have, they are relentless. They have stuck by these allegations. They said, no, we heard many years ago that our community needs public transportation. We're not going to back out. We're not going to. We're in the trenches, and we're going to stick to it. It's a really, really hard job. You know, just period. Newspapers are hard. Social media is hard. There's a lot of hard things. They didn't back down. Not one board member stepped away. Not one. You know, so it's very, it's very rewarding to have representatives for our community that, you know, the city has been here. You know, we came to you guys, I think it was three weeks ago, and you were able to advance funds so that we could pay our employees. We couldn't have done that if you guys wouldn't have done. So thank you, you know, thank you for doing that and letting us have an opportunity to pay sixty-five employees. So solutions. You know, I'm a pretty positive person. Despite this craziness, we're gonna, we're gonna keep moving forward. Priorities of this board, continue to raise funds. Every day, calling, emailing, going to our businesses, are you able to help us? To date, I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but I know as of Friday, we were right about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars raised. We know we need at least six hundred thousand just to get us dug out of a hole and to get services on the road. So we're getting there. The one big funder requested that those funds pay off a bank, so we didn't have flexibility in those funds, but we got us out of the hole a little bit, little by little. That's how we're going to do this. Number two priority of this board, make sure our employees are paid. We have several employees that are here in the room today, and maybe some writers, that when we closed the door on January sixth, they were supposed to be paid last Friday. No paychecks. Hard day. And they have rent due in a week, you know, things like that. As the board instructed, every employee will be paid for every minute that they have worked, though. We have to get the receipts. We have to send them to Nebraska Department of Transportation. They do an audit through that. When those monies are sent back here, every person will be paid when that funding comes through. So I want, there's a lot of talk and, talk on the social media about that. Every minute they worked, they will be paid, period. So just know, know that will stop some conversations out there. Three, you know, not only did this embezzlement affect our, you know, our transit agency, this embezzlement affected many, many local vendors. Our mechanics, our fuel, you know, everything, our, you know, our auto shop, our phones, all of those. We have support from this board that their priority is we want these vendors paid. They're our local people. And about eighty percent of that debt of the invoices is with local businesses. So we want to get this going. Again, we have to for our community. Number four, get the buses rolling again. Second set of bullets at the bottom here, how long will that take? You know, we, we have to get raising funds. We've been doing that since day one. We have to pay our employees, and we got to get out of the hole. You know, before we can start services, those must be finished. If we get a large donor providing service, we could have service going in five days, maybe even three, depending on our driver availability. But if we had a large tech come in the door, we're very confident that we could get that going. Specifically, we could get that going because of the processes that were already in place and ignored with our previous manager. But they're in place, and now we have instructed and reviewed the policies and just made them stronger. That's what we'll have to do. If we do not have a large donor that's, you know, is willing to step forward, it's going to take longer, three to four weeks, or it could be longer. Our mobility management team is working on a couple of different solutions. There's a small set that we could start with some of our telelift. It's our door-to-door service that, sorry, not door-to-door, curb-to-curb service, that could get going fairly, fairly quickly with a smaller amount of money. However, the risk of that is, we have support from Tyson, from Lindsay, from Great Dane, from Northeast Community College. If we start small, you know, they won't walk away, but if they don't have any service, you know, they're not going to use our system. So, you know, we, our Plan A would be to make sure if we have a large wash of monies come in, we want those services back on the road. That's our goal. There is another path forward. Our team is taking to the North Fork Area Transit Board the different solutions, and they need to look at those and decide what the best steps are do, or will be for the agency. We're happy to share that with you, you know, if you want us to come back in a month or a couple of weeks. But the protocol would be to take that to the board, and then we would bring that to you guys, so you know what's going on. Let's see. Changes that we have done today, and this is very, this is very important, too, because there's a lot of discussions in the community that, first step, you know, a CPA firm is doing all of the accounting, period. That's just, it will be outsourced. So every invoice coming in goes directly to the CPA versus staying with staff in-house. The Board of Directors will sign all checks, everything going out the door. We, we have the president and the vice president that are able to do that today only. Weekly board meetings. This board has met every week for at least a month. Our next one is on Thursday morning this week. Our team, our mobility management team from DOT, we're here to get us through this spot. Someday, we're going to have to have another director. Any hands, anybody needs a job? You know, we take all resumes. That's going to be a tough job, tough job to fill that. But we want someone there. We want someone good, and we want someone there that sees a vision of where we were five years ago, of what this community said. Our bylaws allow seven to fifteen directors. Today, we have nine. We welcome anyone that is interested. There's just an application process. You can talk to any of the board members. You're welcome to call the office. You can talk to me afterwards if, if you know someone that may be interested. Last bullet just says, you know, we do want people to know what's going on. We are a public agency. We receive federal dollars and state dollars, so the more transparent we are, the better it is for our community. So when you, when you would like us to come back for an update, let us know, and, you know, we'd be happy to tell you where we are today. Yep. Questions, anyone?
Well, first, thank you, Corinne. That was a very helpful history as to where we are now and, and what your team is, is trying to accomplish. So I think we will take a period here of questions if the council has some, and then we'll allow for some public discussion. But potentially by questions here from the council, we'll address some of the questions that people out there might already have. So I, I guess I would, I would start off in terms of where we are right now. Obviously, the system was impacted by a very unfortunate situation regarding embezzlement and fraud, and took a big, big hit. And I'm not sure that we, we all embezzlement and fraud, and took a big hit, and I'm not sure that we all know for sure exactly just how big that is even today. But you and your team are doing your best to focus on trying to get back on the ground in a way that serves the most vulnerable people in Norfolk, who are, whose lives have been changed right now by not having this service. So how do you envision, and you said, I respect if you can't completely answer this, but when you're able to start again, how do you prioritize what services come back first?
The board will make the ultimate decision for that. If we have just a smaller amount of, you know, of a donation or a sponsor that steps forward, you know, we started with just, you know, demand response service, and it's curb-to-curb, we could do that again, absolutely. And the people that were with us before we moved into the flex route, you know, at least 40% of that group, it might have been longer, but I haven't seen the surveys at the agency. We know they may not have a car. They may not drive. They may not have a driver's license for whatever reason. Those folk need us. We're affordable. We're there for them. We're reliable, and we can get them to dialysis, or meals, or groceries. The board will ultimately have to make that decision, but we know there's a group of persons that are out there. You know, their hard way is, what about those 40 people that we take to Tyson at 3:30 in the morning, that are working second shift, you know, or first shift? You know, our bus was full, absolutely, you know, every day, coming there and coming back. So it's a hard choice for the board. We'll give them the numbers from what we had. We'll also look at, you know, Tyson helped us fund that service, too. And if they're willing to stay with us, we have to have those monies to go forward, too. And can we do a balance of that? That's something that we want to put in front of the board. Hope that helps answer.
Outside of Tyson and that service, within Norfolk, you mentioned 1,500 rides a week. Can you kind of break down who, I know there were a lot of families with schoolchildren relying on getting school kids to and from.
Correct.
But can you break down in general, primary users of the system?
And our users actually have been the same for many years, even after we expanded. A third of our users are education. So that could be from preschool to college, you know, you name it, but they're an education trip. Another third of our users are employees. So people are working. They can spend money in our community. That's what they need to do. And then the other third of ours are elderly. You know, our elderly population, they've been a partner in transit for many, many years. But those are our, you know, third, third, and third users that we have. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. Talking about Tyson as a sponsor, what has been their reaction, Lindsay manufacturing reaction, Wayne State, how they are, what's the communication there with them?
We've talked to most of them on, if not daily, I'd say every other day, because the first question they say are, are you running? They said, we're waiting. We want to be on board. We need you guys. Not one of our existing sponsors has jumped ship, which is wonderful to see. And, you know, we do know that when we, you know, if we're able to start this service, we want to talk to them about the contracts, because part of the investigation is looking at what was reported to the board versus what was actually agreed upon. So there'll be more that comes out later in the investigation on that.
You did mention that if a large donor provides funding, what's considered a large donor?
$600,000. I said large, right? And that is what we know to date. You know, things happen, you know, maybe next week. I hope not, you know, but we're digging the best we can. But if we had $600,000 in two days, we could get service back on the road where we were.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
You said three to five days, you could be back operational with the staff not getting paid. How is that morale to come back?
I bet they'll talk to you in a few minutes. But, well, the one thing that, in my 27 years of doing transit planning, on Thursday, the January 5th, the board sent out a letter that said, you know, tomorrow, January 6th, we will be suspending services. We had 68 employees on Thursday. We lost one. Everybody showed up on Thursday and stayed through their shift, and every one of those folks showed up on Friday. I mean, what a staff, right?
Good to hear.
Yeah, amazing.
I guess I have a two-part question.
Yes, sir.
And maybe you can't answer because it is under investigation, but have we determined how we got into this position, where the errors were, and how, I know you have a plan moving forward, but is that in place, or what, I guess my question is, we're in a situation, and how do we get there, but how do we remove ourselves other than a large donation?
How do we remove ourselves from?
This poor situation.
It will take money, you know, to get that. I think, you know, we want to continue to build trust back in our community, you know, for me, for our drivers, for, you know, all of the comments that we have, you know, on our social media accounts. It's not easy. You know, it's not easy. You ask, how did we get there? That is absolutely under investigation, because there were many processes and policies in place that were not followed, period. And that's all I'll say on that particular one. And hopefully, as you guys see, when you have an accounting firm that's a CPA, when you have board meetings, when you have, you know, your board only able to sign checks, you know, there's a balance there that, you know, we had an executive director, because you hire someone with experience. Right now, they will report directly to the board and be paid out, because we have that, we need to build that trust again. We have to.
Corinne, a related question, I've asked it of different members of your mobility management team, because I get this question, too, is that if it weren't for the actions that are under investigation, would this be a sustainable transit system? And I know what I've been told by your mobility management team. I'll let you answer that on record.
100%. We would be rolling yesterday, last weekend, today. 100%. And just to build on how that would be in process, because our, you know, today, when we have a full service out there, our budget is right about $250,000 each month. Each month, we submit. We send out all those bills. We pay the gas. We do that. We send that into Nebraska Department of Transportation. It takes them a month or so to review that. Then those funds come back to us. So they audit these. We audit these. But right now, everything that we had in the back coffers to pay our vendors, to pay our drivers, is stolen, was stolen. And until we have this lump sum of money, plus digging out of our hole, we've got to do that before we can move forward. Yep. But if that lump of sum of money would not have been stolen, we would be on the road today. All the staff that would hear, half of them would be still out on the road today. Yep. And for 50 years, you guys.
When do they think all the investigation wrapped up?
I don't know. I haven't heard. I haven't heard. Maybe it goes on until someone stops running. I don't know that.
But I'm talking about the investigation into the books.
I'm not sure. We can find out for a little.
Right, because you're never going to build a base at all without knowing what happened. Because right now, you could speculate that that was all embezzled, but it does look like a lot of those funds were allocated improperly, like he was running the business backwards, and you were overspending and not being able to collect 8%. I'm just, if I was a big donor, that's how I would look at things. So it's going to be hard to get anybody to believe in this until that investigation is conducted. And then at that point in time, it's time to say, okay, let's admit fault, and let's tell the community, this was horrible. This director blew things up. I understand that. But you've got to build a base, like, there's got to be, you know what, man, this is terrible, but let's admit the fault, and we can move on as a community from here. I mean, I'm not, I can't speak on behalf of the city, but I can speak on myself as a city councilman. I voted in favor to give money to this. And if, and I was, I feel naive about it, because we should have called for two audits. We should have called for an audit in the first quarter and the final quarter, instead of just the last quarter of the fiscal, you know. So I mean, like, I think for us, moving forward, there's going to be different things we'll put in place if we're going to be donating any funds to any organization. So I just feel like we've got to build a base to get the trust back. I don't feel like right now, we're just kind of talking around it, you know. And I'm not, I know this is extremely hard for you, and you're under, everybody's in, people, you guys' team is under an investigation, so it's tough. But, and I commend the people that have stuck it out and are trying to get this thing to move forward, but it's going to be real hard, you know.
Just two points of response. Some of what you mentioned just earlier, that funds were spent in, you know, inappropriately in this. There are funds for transit agency that you have to have for business that were, now, he spent money on things that were a different case.
Right.
But there were funds for transit that can be reimbursed.
Correct, yeah.
Now, his process, whether that was done or not, is part of the investigation. We're, our team is hoping we're going to recover some of those funds that was not, you know, completed appropriately.
Right. And I guess what I'm getting at is, if you're receiving 20%, right, and then you're funded back your 80, during that time, if you've got to be out to pay, or you have to have two months' worth of pay period, it's really easy with, when you're a business requesting funds and submitting, to get backwards on what you, you don't really know if you're allocated enough, if you're spending your funds properly. And if he was, if the bus routes were actually exceeding the 20 and the 80 you're receiving, and I'm sure that investigation will state that, you know, because nobody was saying, go get, he was, you know what I'm saying? He was actually responsible for developing more routes, right? And putting those routes on place, and saying, we can afford to do these, we can afford these routes. We can afford to go to the here. We can afford to go there. And then telling the board that we have these many funds coming to us, but some of those funds weren't, you know. So that's my whole point, is in order to get people to pony up, you know, businesses to come forward, it's, okay, we found this out. This is what was going on. Either he took everything.
Yeah.
Or he was just a poor, poor businessman, and was taking some, you know, and then that could be one thing. And then I think people are going to go, okay, things are fixed. They've obviously put some things in place to get this thing moving forward. And I think then, at that point in time, I think things will happen. So I'm only putting that out there because I want to see you guys succeed. But it's, yeah, this is a, everybody's in a tough spot, you know.
100%.
Right, so it's just.
But I do want to just make sure we address that there's a lot out there about the spending that is not correct.
Right.
And when the board is able to tell their story one day after the investigation.
Yeah.
If people want to wait that long, I mean, that penalizes the folk that need transit service here.
I understand that, but do you s-
And you get the call, and you get the call, and, you know, like these, they still need service.
Right.
And we've cleaned it. We have the processes in place. This board is going to keep going.
Okay, that's a fair point. That's a fair rebuttal back to me. I appreciate that.
Don't want to rebuttal. No, they're just saying that there's-
But I'm saying, you're giving me a good response for the pressure I'm putting on you right now.
There's just a lot out there that is not correct.
Right.
And I appreciate you addressing that, because it's an elephant in the room. And even from our staff that was let go, imagine what they hear.
Yeah.
Imagine. But every one of these guys know that this board was here. You guys stepped forward and helped get them paid. You know, they know that, too. And, you know, again, thank you for doing that, or we wouldn't even be here, you know. So.
Corinne, I got one other thing that just comes up about buses are empty, obviously, around town. You're talking about if we had the money, we'd be right back to where we were and running the service. And maybe hit on that a little bit, on if you would change bus routes, or quantity of buses, or timing of bus stops, or how many bus stops you have. I have no idea. But is there discussions on that also, of what going back to running actually means? Is it all 30-some buses wherever you have, or is it a modified version of what it was to make it better or more sustainable?
Really great question. One of the pieces, as I mentioned, like, our flex route hasn't even operated a year. And at many other transit agencies across the United States, you do service checks at three months, six months, nine months, and a year. And usually, you know, our team, we're just getting on the six-month part, kind of when all this happened. We also, sorry, I meant to say one more thing. Transit actually does an audit every year or two. Wrong point, off the point here. But when they do that audit at the end of the year, that also helps them make decisions, like, you know, should we cut our bus service? If it starts at 6:30, but we don't pick any bus, should we do it at 7:00 or 7:15? Because 45 minutes on the clock adds up over a year, and time is money. But that actually would have happened throughout this year for all of our services. When we come back, there may be some, you know, efficiencies. If we knew we weren't picking up someone. If I hit your third point about empty buses, I'm a little sensitive about it, but that's just because I'm a transit geek. But I'll give you the standard answer of, you know, when you're at an airport, you know, you see a lot of empty, until they all come at one time. In transit world, you know, except for like Tyson and Lindsay that have super early morning, you know, if you look at our peak buses, we are full with kids and workers from 6:30 in the morning until 9 o'clock. If you go out for lunch, you may not see the buses as full, but come catch us from 2:45 on to 6 o'clock, our buses are full. And so if you haven't, you know, you have to understand that, too. But you're right, we do have, you know, we do have empty buses on some times. Some agencies, they only operate, like, on peak hours. We can look at that, too, and take that to the board if we need to. Yep. Great question.
And you kind of addressed the audit situation by saying you have an accountant, a firm that's running your books now. So obviously, the need for audits aren't quite as pressing.
Well, they've done them every year for 10 years. It just happens that you usually do them at the end of the year.
Right.
And a typical one, ironically, so convenient. Wasn't that?
But you made it sound like the books will be handled by an outside firm from now on.
They will be.
Yeah, so you kind of, that's addressing what I'm, yeah, right.
But even prior to this, though, there's an audit.
There wasn't audit, correct.
Yeah, in 2021, there would have been one. In 2022, it's pushed to January of 2023 now, just because of all this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it aligns up with your fiscal, probably.
Yeah, usually. And most transit agencies across the nation are like that. Yep. Yeah.
Corinne, just one more, I guess maybe more of a statement, but I don't want to get passed over. 80% of what you get is reimbursement from state and federal funds, correct? So really, what you, you need to get back on track, but to fund this, to keep going, is 20%, continual 20% that you're not getting back from the state or fed. And if we don't use it, transit don't use it, not we, then somebody's going to use it. And you said that in the beginning, but typically, we see these dollars go into bigger cities, Lincoln, Omaha, things like that, where we have the possibility of using these things, but to fund something like this on a continual basis is the 20% of total real cost.
And with our budget, you know, our budget for this past year was $2.5 million. So, you know, of those monies, $2 million came from federal and state dollars, and we bucked up the last of it, you know, our city, our county, our sponsors did. And some of our fairs, too, but it's a pretty small. But we were able to bring $2 million back in here, you know, and get people to work to spend more money. You know, that economic development piece is really important, too. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Corinne, just to piggyback on that question, you said you were budgeting $250,000 monthly. Are you still doing that to acquire these funds to build up again?
Not unless we put our drivers back on the road. So as we-
So you need an expense before you can submit that?
Correct. And we have to pay for it first, and then we get reimbursed back. Yep, correct.
So essentially, you got to wipe out the debt, and then raise two months' worth of overhead.
And there's a way that, you know, when we were working with the finance institutions, the local banks, they want to help us. They want this. And there's a way that they may be willing to look at a long-term loan to help us. It may be a short-term, you know, I'm not in the banking world, but they're not backing away. They've already helped us. And, you know, they recognize that this service, you know, it's a quality of life for folk. It really, really is. And that may be one option, but at the end of the day, it's still a loan. And, you know, if we're going to try and do this and just scrape the bottom clean, and nobody wants to be in the red, you know, a sponsor would be our best case scenario. Yep. But they haven't walked away.
Corinne, that $600,000 number is daunting, but it is fair to say, during the first, last week of fundraising, you did have some sizable donations come in that did help you restructure that debt. You mentioned going from two banks to one, right? And so that first tranche of giving really helped accomplish restructuring that debt and getting to one bank, consolidating to one bank.
You guys helped us. When you stepped forward and advanced your funds, they saw that you didn't back away. You know, you hung in the trenches with us, and that makes a difference when the city is behind, you know, behind the service. Makes a big difference.
So fair to say that in this time period, while you're trying to get the books right, trying to get a hold of just everything that happened, how to get back on your feet- how to get back on your feet, you're also looking at organizational reforms moving forward, adjustments to route services. Um, another important one, from where I'm sitting, is renegotiated contracts. If a Tyson or Lindsay wants this to continue, it seems to me that there's probably some, some vigorous discussions there as to the true costs of what that service is.
Yes, and those-
What they're willing to pay for it, right?
Yes, correct, and, um, our team was involved with the initial estimates for a Tyson service, for a Wayne service, for Wayne State College. Like, we were involved, we were not involved in the negotiations, and that is under investigation, so. And what was reported to the board is under investigation, so. Yeah, really great questions, you guys.
Okay. Thank you, Corinne. I think we'll pause now and, um, allow for some public discussion, understanding that, uh, I don't think any of us wants to be here till midnight. We are gonna put on, um, as we typically do for public discussion, some time limits, five minutes to each individual. And, uh, we, we do welcome, uh, public to come forward now. And if you would start by signing in and, and stating your name. Brianna will keep time, and if you get the yellow card, that means you got one minute to stop.
Shut her up, huh?
Slow down and stop, yeah.
My name is Tim Ernst, and I don't deny it at all that we do need that service. However, I think it needs to be trimmed down so we can get this show on the road. Number one, that trolley needs to go away. You know, that needs to be sold to get some capital, and I know that's not gonna happen tomorrow. But it needs to get some capital, get that going. And my feeling is that if we have fourteen million dollars, a double-digit million dollars to spend on the rock pile, we surely can, could find a hundred thousand dollars somewheres to get these little yellow buses going for elderly and to get the kids to school if we have to. That's, uh, you know, I think if we have to do some creative accounting to get that money from the city somehow, I think it needs to be done, because I don't use it, but I see going around town all the time. I think it needs to, you know, those little yellow buses need to stay in town until they get on their feet. And, but we need to help our own citizens of Norfolk who've built this town and what have you, we need to help them out. And, uh, you know, whatever it takes to get the little yellow ones going. The blue ones, they need to stay in the shed because whenever I see them running around town, they're empty, or maybe they have three, four people in them, or kids. If there is a route where we have to take kids to school in town, where we need a bigger vehicle, okay, fine. But they take them to school, they park it, they, when it's time to come home, they go get them again, you know? We just need to really trim it down to where we can get it going and, uh, to, uh, start out affordable. Because it can't cost that much to run them little yellow ones around, to help the elderly and stuff like that, you know? And not necessarily drive around all day, but to, you know, if there's a call, they go, if there's not, they don't. That's it.
Thank you, Tim.
Hi there, folks, beautiful, beautiful place, first time I've been here, my name's Joe Cleve. I live up here at three-hundred-and-ninety North Ninth, been here fifty years, same house. And my dad was state patrolman, twenty-eight years, uncle was a sheriff, cousin worked for the LHPV, uh, I mean, my whole family's full of police officers. And what I experienced with this, first of all, right, I'm sorry, what did one trash can say to the other? "I heard you flipped your lid." What'd that trash case, that trash can say back to him? "You stink." "I haven't flipped my lid, Norfolk Transit stinks." What was going on up in my neighborhood with those people, every morning, five o'clock, buses up there at the, whatever you call it, the old Virgess Hospital, it's five o'clock, four o'clock in the morning, coming and going, people in and out, right? Something was going on with this bus system, and I'm the scapegoat. You know what? Because I knew what was going on, I seen it, I watched it, I made it my business when I caught him messing with a little boy one night. Cops didn't do nothing, said it didn't happen. I seen it. Then a neighbor across the street's watching him with a big scope, and their kids watching him too. And I don't know what that has to do with the bus system, but I do. That bus system doesn't need to be up there at four in the morning, five in the morning, people coming and going. One night, because the sheriff told me, "Do some watching, Joe, get some plates, we wanna know what's going on, go by the sheriff." And I did. So I'm out in my truck, the party bus drives by, and I've had friends tell me about this party bus, it's quite a ride. So, here it goes by, and I thought, I better get out of here, so I moved up the street, here it comes back watching me. That, those people on the buses were, I don't know if they were stalking me or what, but everywhere I went, those buses were there. And you know what? I went down there complaining one day, you know what, I walked in the office, "Who are you, who are you, who are you?" Well, it was none of their business. I'm very upset, because I'm the one that's getting in trouble, I'm the one that's always having problems. And I don't need to live in, I, my neighborhood's been a bad area for years and years and years. And I don't wanna see it get worse. I want this area up here to be great, beautiful part of town. You people need to take a close look at this guy and you see what he's up to, okay? Because you know what? It ain't right. Greed does strange things to people. You get greedier and greedier and greedier. What's stopping him? What's stopping that person? Are you already embezzled how many millions or thousands? What's stopping him from being involved in drugs and prostitution? Nothing. So you people need to take a close look at what he infested in this community, what that person was doing to this community, okay? Now, I hope when I leave here, Captain Miller doesn't arrest me. I hope. I got my fingers crossed, I like him, he's a good guy, I've known him forever. Like I said, I've been law enforcement my whole life. My dad used to beat on me when I was a little kid, I'd been beat up by the cops more than George Floyd, okay? Peace out, people. Hope you do the right thing.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Good evening.
Good evening, what's, what's this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Neil Slick, I'm a former employee at Norfolk Transit.
My name is Nicole Walters. Um, I am a customer of Norfolk, uh, Area Transit. I'm, I moved here back in two thousand nineteen, and what the town? I moved here from Omaha, but ever since I moved here, the Norfolk Public Transit has been awesome to get my daughter to and from school. Since then, when we first moved here, um, it was first the, I think, the telelift that, uh, she was taking, and then they just started the tripper. But unfortunately, in June, my car broke down, I'm without a car no more. So ever since the summer, when they ended up doing the bus route around town and doing the tripper, it was very handy and come in need of getting her to and from school, getting us to and from her appointments, to the grocery store, uh, just, you know, around town. Um, I'm without a job right now, and I've been wanting to go apply for places to get a job, you know? Um, but that's kinda hard without the bus system to get me around town, because I don't know many people in town. I know maybe about five people that have been very grateful. He is one of them who stepped up, you know, since the bus stopped in January to help me get my daughter to and from school, because I don't know many people, to help me with that. It's been a real struggle, so I just wanted to let you guys know of how helpful it is to me. And I know a couple other friends who also use the bus as well to get to and from work, or to get their kids to school as well, but they couldn't make it because they're at work right now. Um, but they're running in the same situation as I am, and it's very thin of trying to balance out between at least three people in him to get my daughter to and from school, and I don't know how much longer that can last. And I can't afford her to miss any school. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for everyone that funded for our PJX. And otherwise, I look forward to moving forward with this company.
Thank you, Neil, how long had, had you worked for?
I'd be there one year in April.
As, as a bus driver?
Yes, and I'm one of the guys that has the endorsement to drive the bigger buses. I take Ukrainians to Omaha, they have no way to get there if you have more than four or five. So, I'll take a bigger bus down there so they can get their organizations and shots and papers and stuff so they can be part of the public. But I wanna thank you guys.
All right, thank you, Neil.
Yep.
So, my name is Tony Cordova, I'm a bus driver and supervisor, or was, at Norfolk Area Transit. I just wanna say that, uh, you know, we pray that you guys give us all the support that you give us. People like that lady over there, they beat us. Please help us.
Thank you, Tony. How long had you been working for Transit, Tony?
A year.
A year, as, as a driver, yeah?
Driver and as a supervisor.
As supervisor, okay.
I was probably a supervisor there for the last, uh, six, seven months.
Okay.
And we're a great group, uh, and people out there need us. We got medical people, uh, that need to get to the VITA, uh, school kids, that lady, um, people that need to go to work that are, uh, you know, a little handicapped, they all need us. So I just ask them.
What do, Tony, what do you think people are doing right now that don't have this service?
They're, they're wondering, they want us back. I ran into several of them during this last week, and they're all asking, "When are you gonna come and get us?" So, I have no answers for it, but I was hoping that we'd get an answer today.
Thank, thank you, Tony.
I'm Miles Jenkins, uh, former driver supervisor. Uh, we'd start at five-thirty in the morning, taking people to, uh, the VITA and to work. A lot of the people we, uh, provided transportation for specifically moved to Norfolk because we had a public transportation system. We, this week, one of our former customers could only get to the VITA once for their dialysis, uh, because the other partner, uh, only ran three days this week. And, uh, we took him once to his dialysis. And it's for those people we, we really need to get to rolling again. Um, I think it's the door-to-door service that's really, really needed here in Norfolk, a lot of people. And we were up to three-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred rides a day a year ago, just for that service.
Just for telelift, so you were part of telelift, okay.
Would appreciate your support, and, uh, thank you.
Will you sign in, Miles, please? Can you sign in, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Miles.
My name is Steve Sehi, I was here last month also. When Corinne was up here talking, she hit something right on the nail on the head. The board of directors did not follow protocol. And that was pretty obvious. What gets me is there's no checks and balances whatsoever. As far as I'm concerned, when there's no checks and balances, protocols not being followed, you get rid of the board. Simple as that. Now, I'm not saying that we don't need this bus service, we prob, we do. But I, I agree with Mr. Ernst, we need, uh, cut some of the buses down. You know, I liken it to somebody that, um, goes bankrupt. You start from the bottom and you build, build yourself back up. Simple as that.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Monica Maxton.
Monica?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I have been only working here for about a month and a half to two months. I appreciate, when I walked in, the, the uproar of enthusiasm that we all have when it came to getting people to come in and sign up for our services. I, um, I'm a dispatch and customer service, so I do both. And we, as dispatch, have to go through the proper protocol of, sorry.
You're good.
Of trying to guide our drivers who are basically out there, they know the city and stuff, right? But there's some times where they're like, "Hold on, they'll dispatch us, they'll ask for some information." And we have to not only give them the proper address or whatever, right? But we also have to communicate with our customers that, "Oh, he'll be about fifteen minutes late," or "She'll be," you know, because of traffic. What I try to do is I wanna be there for everybody. If it wasn't for this job and the background that this job has done and everything, I would be out of a job. Yes, I understand that we were prob, we were closed when we needed to be closed and everything that went down. But I, honestly, I was blindsided, I didn't know what to do. But I'm sticking with this job because it's the only one that gives me confidence to know that we are all doing the right thing to help the community. And I want you guys to know that we, we work hours upon hours doing what we can to help. And I feel like this would be the, the best place for everybody to be able to look for, when it comes to getting a ride, let's say, twelve o'clock at night, or, you know, certain hours of the night, we're there, we go out of our way, we try our best to do what we can, we want to, our priority is make sure the customer is satisfied, and it's our priority first. So with that said, I would appreciate- So, with that said, I would appreciate it if this would go forward to us being open still, okay? I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Monica. Thanks for sharing.
Hi, I am Jackie McPherson. Yes, I'm back again. I just wanted to, um, I, I wanted to say this when I was here the first time and I didn't get a chance to. Um, I just want you to remember that, um, I, I do agree with Steve and all of them about making it smaller again. Start small and then go big because they went big way too fast. We got stretch marks. And then after, you know, everything that happened, I, I think that we should start small. Also, I want you to remember, you guys have elderly people or people that you, that end up being left behind. And I had talked about that before. But you have to remember, I just want you to remember this. Sometimes we are the only people, the drivers are the only people that talk to these people or get to, get to see these people. And so, these people are shut-ins. I've met so many people that were like, "I'm not doing, I don't have anything for Christmas. I don't, I'm not doing anything. I don't have any family." That is one thing to remember because that breaks my heart just thinking about it. They did have somebody that, at DeVita, that would go to DeVita. He passed away like a couple of weeks ago. He was a really good friend of mine. I didn't know that. I'm gonna go visit his mom. She knows me. And I feel really bad about that. But you guys have to remember that when you, when we're trying to get this money together, it's not just about rides. It's about mental health. It's about people that are being left behind in that manner. And you love, you know, you, you have people that you love and you probably don't call. We'll call them. Make sure they're okay because it, it really breaks my heart to know they're like, "I'm gonna be home. I don't have anybody to cook for me. I don't, I don't have anything." So, I just want that, everybody to remember that about this. It's not just about, make it bigger. It's not just about the rides. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Good evening.
Hello, my name's Heather Kane in Cleveland. I worked for Norfolk Area Transit. And I was just wanting to say that as long as I have been there in the four months, it, I got to know all the drivers. I got to know a lot of people out in the community because I was one of the drivers out there. Besides doing the morning dispatch, I got out in the community. And it was heartbreaking when I had to call all these customers and tell them that we were shutting down because of one stupid person. And I mean, you don't know how many phone calls I had to field with the crying and the, "What can we do to get funds?" And, I mean, it hurt me. And it's like, how do I keep reassuring my customers that if we did get the funds to start back up again? How do they know that it's not gonna happen again? Is one of the questions I have always been asked. And I'm like, "Just keep doing the best. Just keep putting forth the effort. We're doing the best we can." And, I mean, it's hard trying to explain that to them because I still get asked that question when I go out in public for a lot of people that know me that I worked for Norfolk Area Transit. And I'm like, "I can't answer half of these questions that you guys are asking me because I don't know how to answer them." But I really enjoyed working for them and it was, it was hard when I found out we had to shut the doors.
I agree with her.
Thank you, Heather.
I'm gonna sign in. Okay. Go ahead.
I agree with everything she just said. Um, my name is Darlene Dismaine. And my parents own this company. They opened it from the ground up, Duane Soul and Anasoul. And I feel that transportation in Norfolk is very well-needed. I'm gonna comment on some things that were said tonight, also about, um, the apartments that are gonna be built here. We have the First Street Bridge that has that rock, um, you know, rock deal that you're doing or whatever. And there's other different projects, um, that I feel right now at this time aren't as necessary. The city of Norfolk needs to continue to provide the transportation for our community. Um, I, I'm standing behind them at all because when I first got this job, I was just like, I was excited about it. I was like, "Oh, great." You know what I mean? It's bringing back the Checker Cap because that's, that's what we named it, Checker Cap. So, it came from my family. And so, I just want everybody to know that I just, it needs to be continued. We need to help the elderly. We need to help people, you know? We need to help the school kids. We need to, um, the bus routes. Um, I feel the bus routes would be a lot more, um, successful if we could have done more marketing, could have went into the different businesses and looked and told them what we have available at these bus stops. And I think it would be, you know, people would have been more open and they would have used it a lot more. And, you know, I just, I just feel that this is very necessary, the telelift, picking people up, taking them to dialysis, taking them to their doctor appointments. We need that. We have elderly. We are number one in this town or in this city is elderly people. It's just, and then we have all these kids that need rides to school and, you know, um, like I said, doctor appointments and all, you know, everything. We just need transportation. It just needs to come back. Um, the loss of our jobs, I mean, and, and what this, what had happened, the, you know, um, with the gentleman that, um, you know, that was put in the wrong place, basically. Put in the wrong place. Um, so, I really feel confident that we could, we need to start small exactly. And we need to look at the different things that were said tonight and really think about what comes first. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Heather.
Also, I would like to add one more thing. I actually lived on one of the bus routes, so it was easier for me to take the bus to work so I didn't have to worry about trying to get out early enough and warm up my car if they ran when I had to be to work because that was 3:00 AM. But, I mean, I've heard nothing but good complaints and good comments and everything about it. And so, I mean, we really would appreciate it if you guys could think about reconsidering it and let us try to get started small again and let us open up. But it is your guys' decision too, besides the community. So, we are just asking for you to keep all this in mind and please, please, please do what you have to do.
That's right.
Thanks again, Heather.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sarah Abler. And, um, Mr. Mayor, you asked this woman here if it was sustainable? And I heard her talk a lot, but I never really heard that this was sustainable. Eighty percent of it comes back in Nebraska Department of Transportation. But it seems like, and I think it's a great service and we need it, but there certainly has to be some efficiencies. Maybe only go at peak hours. And then the people who are utilizing it need to pay for it. You pay $5 a week, I heard, to go to Wayne every day? $5? You can't even buy two gallons of gas. So, if those people are u- using it, great. I'm all for carpooling and stuff. But maybe the people who are utilizing it, who can afford it, should pay more. So, it can be sustainable because was it, is it sustainable?
I said 100%.
I know. How can it be 100%?
Sarah, we'll give, uh, we'll give Corinne a time to address some questions at the end.
Okay. I just, um, don't understand how it can be sustainable if you're giving free rides everywhere and everything. It, it seems like it's just free money and the people on the board, it, you can get, have more board members, but I do think these current board members need to be more, be held to account because that didn't just happen overnight. That's a lot of money.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name's Thomas DeMoss. I'm not tied to Norfolk Area Transit. I've had people very close to me, um, that are tied into it. And I, I don't want to call anybody out. I don't want to name names, but there's a lot of failure in the structure of this board in particular. And Corinne, I want you to hear that as well. But I contacted the president of the board in August and I told her that this was going on. Her next phone call was to Jeff. And how we didn't have the structures for two-party signature checks and everything, I, I get that's all structured failure. I think people that have been on boards know this. I don't know that you're gonna get the funding you need without trust and transparency from the board. I don't know if the board members should stay, should go, should, you know? I'm, I'm not gonna decide that. But I think as a business owner, if I was gonna try to come up with that kind of money, I would be leery because of no transparency. And I know of three of the board members. I don't know any of the rest of them. I don't know anything I've Googled, anything I've tried to pull up has not given me any names of the board. I told the president that as well, that you guys need to be out there to the public. Your names need to be out there. If somebody has concerns, they can contact you by email, phone call, whatever. I have people that have spoken to another board member and, and was also brought up between August and October, this was all brought up to the board. Nothing was done about it. So, I, I just want everybody to be aware of that, that, you know, we're asking for $600,000. I, I, Norfolk Area Transit needs to be here. I've gotten to know a lot of people that work there, have been through a lot of stuff there. And it, we need it. We just need to make sure that, you know, collectively, we go together forward and we make sure that everything's structured right so we don't have to worry about this again. And, and as a donor, they're gonna wanna see that same thing. Nobody's gonna wanna fund that money if there's not the checks and balances to make sure that this will never happen again. So, that's all I'm gonna say. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Thomas.
Jim McKenzie, I'll turn out to repeat what's been talked about before. I just had a, a couple of questions. I mean, the, Andy talked about this, I was not under the umbrella of the city, but yet our public works director evidently was president of the board, the community concern board, I believe it was, and then president of the NFA board for a period of time. So, I, I think there's some city involvement here that really hasn't been talked about that I think at some point in time needs to be, needs to be discussed. Um, I, I agree we need this service. We need a level of service. What that level is, I think is subject to a lot of analysis. Um, the, I'll follow up on sustainability a little bit. I mean, what happens if those federal and state funds go away at some point in time? That's my biggest concern is, uh, we used to have a blue bus that used to drive around town. And that quit when we lost funding. The feds, whatever that situation was, they cut back the funding. Whether we had a certain level of ridership we had to maintain, but it went away. So, what happens if the feds, if we create this dependency on this service and it's a good service, but what happens if the feds change the rules and all of a sudden you've got this dependency and we can't sustain it? I mean, I don't know how you solve that problem, but I think we need to look pretty deeply at how, how to do that. The mobility management, I, I have concerns about the design of mobility management. I mean, it seems like it's made up of a bunch of consultants that the more time you spend here, the more you get paid. And so, is there a self-serving thing with mobility management that, you know, is this NDOT and how they structure mobility management? I have some concerns about how that's done. I mean, it, it seems like, you know, you're gonna cheer us on to get more and more buses and, you know, whether it's sustainable or not, you're still gonna get, your consulting company gets paid. So, I, I guess I have some concerns about how that's structured. The long-term financial plan, you gotta replace those buses on some frequency. Has there ever been a long-term financial plan done? Shouldn't that have been done in the beginning? No business starts up without a long-term financial plan. Anyway, the, the long-term sustainability, I just have huge concerns about that and especially if there's an opportunity for that funding to go away. Maybe it never will, but it has in the past. So, how do you plan for that?
Thank you.
My name is Brad Brooks. I am really concerned about all of the misinformation, all of the people that claim to be experts on what should have been done, what went wrong, this person can't handle, that person can't handle. How is that helping these folks here that don't have jobs? We need to cut down on letters to the editor calling for the removal of all of you folks and this, that, and the other thing. It's not solving anything. It's not getting to the bottom of it. There supposedly is investigations going on about what happened or what didn't happen. These things need to be followed through. And then we can get down to your point about accountability. Yes, there needs to be accountability. There's probably accountability for 10 to 12 people that are in this room tonight that maybe haven't said anything. But we're not solving anything by going out, pointing all these fingers, thinking that we know what the hell is going on when 90% of it, I don't think you do. Because the newspaper says one thing, the county attorney says another thing, the county sheriff says another thing, the board of directors say another thing. Just cut it all out. Slow down. Let the investigation take its course and then let's get to solving some things so that we can get these folks back to work and we can also get to the bottom of it, make it better. I'm, I'm not against transportation. Don't get me wrong. I'm just telling you that people need to slow down, take a deep breath, and let's get some true answers. Enough of the misinformation.
Thank you, Brad.
I'll fill this in later when I calm down.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Good evening.
I have a, oh, my name's Antoinette Hofler. And, uh, I have concerns about, uh, for instance, when the person was hired, did they do a full background check? What were his qualifications? You know? Are we gonna get back in the same boat when they hire somebody else? Are they gonna do a full background check? I don't know. I mean, that's just something to consider.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing no one else, Corinne, um, would, would you like the chance to address any of the questions that came up?
Yes, thank you. Two, two points. One, thank you to the community that came out to express their concerns to you. The board definitely has similar concerns with the goal to keep the service on the road. Councilman, you had talked about the building of trust. We know that. We have to do it. I do wanna address the other piece that, um, one of the public had said that the board did not follow protocol. And that is incorrect. There were processes and procedures in place at the agency. I want to be crystal clear about that. They were not followed, period. The investigation will release the rest of that information. So, I want, I just want to make sure that that is also on the record and for the public to hear. I would love to have a follow-up conversation, um, with any of the community that wants to talk about the sustainability of the transit service. This service has operated for
This service has operated for 50 years. The pots of federal and state monies have changed a little bit because of the names. But there's a very good possibility these monies will not go away. In the last federal transportation bill, actually rural transportation received an increase in funding. We have that on record. Would love to, you know, just have further discussion because it helps us. It helps our community. And just, you know, give people an opportunity to learn about transit and how we fund it. And I think that's it. Yeah, Mayor, and council members.
Okay.
Corinne, I might, just because you're up there, I might ask one further question. Insurance coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Does, do you anticipate any insurance reimbursement for what happened?
I can give you the statement from our attorney that they are looking into this. At this time, they have not advised the board to move in any action or, you know, take action with that. The board has D director and D and O officer insurance. And that means that someone, one of our sponsors that helps us fund the transit, would have to step forward. The agency is not able to do that. Someone would have to step forward and file a claim under that directors and operators insurance policy. But we do have D and O insurance at the Norfolk Transit Agency for all of the board members.
Right. What I was looking at maybe was more of an endorsement for crime insurance. If that policy had such an endorsement.
I don't know the technicalities. I apologize, I'm not. We did not have fraud insurance at Norfolk Area Transit. In Nebraska, for a transit agency of this size, that's not common to have it. And we have 50 transit agencies in the state of Nebraska. I would say, you know, 75% of the agencies our size do not have that. After this incident, they will all have it. Yeah. Absolutely. Lesson learned. Yep, expensive. Yep.
I want you to know we're rooting for you. I mean, I know it's a pressure cooker. It's a little bit of a pressure cooker in here.
You guys have been at the table for 50 years. Not you guys. Maybe you're not old enough. But somebody's been at the table for 50 years.
You can see it gets pretty intense in here. And it's a pressure cooker.
You get it.
Ultimately, we're rooting for you.
I just get redder as the night goes on. It goes with the hair, you know? That's how it rolls. It's the Irish coming out. It's all good.
Corinne, while you're here, I do want to say thank you. It's a tough situation for everybody. And I know you've put a lot of time, you and your team have put a lot of time and hours into this. It's a very bad situation due to actions being investigated that went to worse because it ultimately has disabled the system for now. But I think we heard a lot of different opinions tonight. But a common denominator that I heard through all is that the service is needed. And that we need to get it back to operational for the most vulnerable people in our community. And I really like what Jackie said about this not just being about rides. I've heard from people who use it, who, people who have worked for it. This was not necessarily just about rides. Even though they're critical to the user, it's about community and connection. And so, we're, Tacko, what Shane said, we are rooting for you. And we wanna, we want to see this community service come back to life and ultimately be as strong as ever. So, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And we'll, our team will keep getting, you know, we're gonna do the reimbursements as fast as we can find the backup data. That's our number one goal. Get the funds back. Yep, thank you for the opportunity, though, Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, believe it or not, that was the last item on our council agenda. We are adjourned.